College District Board of Trustees. The meeting will come to order. It is now one twelve. Madam Board Secretary, can I have a roll call, please?
Student trustee, I'm sorry, trustee Bueno? Trustee Henderson?
Here.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman?
Here.
Trustee Ino?
Here.
Trustee Vela? Absent. Trustee Vedis?
Here.
Student trustee Bayham?
Thank you. Now we'll have VP Ino lead us in the flag's route.
Oh, please stand. Repeat after me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands.
Thank you.
Thank you, VP Ino. The First Amendment and the Brown Act guarantee a member of the public the right to criticize a public employee, a public official in the performance of their duties. However, speakers are encouraged to focus their comments on issues relevant to the conduct of the public's business rather than on private and unrelated matters. Speakers are reminded that the Brown Act and First Amendment do not protect the famatory statements made which may subject the speaker to personal liability. We have a few public speakers. So we have, is Mr. Cuevas online?
Let me check. No, he is not.
Okay. I don't see him in here. So then we have Robert Montalvo. He should be on Zoom.
He should be on. Robert Montalvo, please unmute yourself. Okay, let me bring, let me bring anyone in. Is he online? Yes, he is. Yes, yes. You have three minutes, sir.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. I wanted to just talk about three items that are on this agenda. The first item that I want to talk about is item AA two, which is a complaint against trustee seat number seven, Kelsey Lino. I apologize if I mispronounced any part of that name. Since this this meeting is covered under the Brown Act, a little confused because any complaints of any violations should go to the LA County District Attorney to handle that particular case. And if it has, this board should not be discussing anything regarding that until until it's finalized. So I don't understand why this would be on, on the agenda as an item for an allegation of discussions under a closed session. And I think it is above your jurisdiction to discuss anything. So I would suggest you table this mostly for liability reasons. Because I think on seat seven, Lino should maybe consult an attorney because I think this might be a form of harassment by proceeding with this. So I think that is something that you should consider, maybe tabling this item until you can resolve it legally. Another item I wanted to speak on was item M, number one, on some expenditures. First of all, the what's put out to the public, it's not complete, it's cut off in many sections. There's no explanation of what the items are, what the money is being spent on. One particular one from a vendor number one zero two three six zero two. I noticed that the address associated with that vendor is also an address used by several other companies. I'm wondering what the vetting process is for vendors, you know, for, for schools within this district. Also, there's no explanation of what some of these codes mean. I would suggest that you also include a description, even in a brief, on forty-five words, so that the public can disseminate what each item that that money is being spent on. Instead of having, you know, somebody do a FOIA request just to get the receipt. Again, this is mostly for transparency also and also to save, save you time on any FOIA requests in the future. And the last one I wanted to talk about was item Z four, which is I guess rewriting Title Nine and you're titling it prohibition of sex discrimination. I read through this Title Nine, the way you're revising it, and it's very confusing. It seems like you're trying to categorize it as just sex discrimination, but also eliminating sexual harassment. You mentioned that two times in the writing. It's very poorly written, in my opinion. And again, very, very confusing. I would suggest maybe, I would like to see maybe a subsection on that, including sexual harassment.
Mr. Montalvo, your time is up. Okay, did we have anyone in?
Nope, this was two. Yeah.
The Los Angeles Community College recognizes that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and cared for by the Tongva, the Tavium, Serrano, Kish, and Chumash peoples who honor and pay, we honor and repay, pay respect to their elders and descendants, past, present, and emerging as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. We acknowledge that settler colonization resulted in land seizure, disease, subjugation, slavery, relocation, broken promises, genocide, and multi-generational trauma. This acknowledgement, excuse me, demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth, healing, and reconciliation and to elevating the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of Los Angeles County. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work and to teach and educate on these ancestral lands. We are dedicated to growing and sustaining relationships with native peoples and local tribal governments, including, in no particular order, the Ferde Nenyo Tavium Band of Mission Indians, Gabrieleno Tongva Indians of California Tribal Council, Gabrieleno Tongva San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians, Gabrieleno Tong, sorry, Gabrieleno Band of Mission Indians, Kish Nation, San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, and the San Fernando Band of Mission Indians. Before we proceed, Chancellor, are there any changes to the agenda or order of business?
It's Madam President, good afternoon, members of the board. Yes, there are three items that we'd like to draw to your attention to request to be pulled. First is item T fifteen from the Consent Calendar for Business Special Grant Funded Other Agreements. The second item is the Facilities Item X three. And the third item is Human Resources Item Y three. So if you could draw attention for our request to withdraw items T fifteen, X three, and Y three. Thank you.
Chance. Now, colleagues, may I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda and order of business with the requested amendments?
So moved.
Moved by Ino? Second by Bueno. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote? Trustee Bueno?
Yeah.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela? Absent. Trustee Vedis?
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting in closed session from August seventh, twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Moved by Ino?
Okay.
Second by Hernandez. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote? Trustee Bueno? Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino? Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Vedis?
Yes.
Thank you, colleagues. Do any members of the resource table wish to be recognized at this time to make comments before the floor?
James O'Keever, AFT fifteen twenty-one Faculty Guild. Good afternoon. The first thing I want to bring up is that you are going to have some faculty and possibly some students here discussing an issue that's an ongoing issue over at Los Angeles Trade Tech. And it's the issue with elevators. And this has been an issue since I've been, since before I was a president, is this consistent need to have elevators that are working? And recently, faculty and students got stuck in an elevator, and that's unacceptable. And there needs to be some sort of ongoing maintenance of elevators instead of waiting till they break down to then fix them, right? And our faculty are here to talk more about that, so I don't want to steal their thunder. But the other thing I want to talk about is this concept of shared governance. I always found this a very interesting concept that a lot of people don't fully understand or fully appreciate. I've always understood that shared governance is getting the opinions of the other constituents on the campus. So for instance, you're going to ask the faculty, you're going to ask the staff, you know, what they feel about a certain situation. Shared governance does not mean that the person who is asking us their opinion has to follow the direction we tell them. And I'm okay with that. And I'm okay with that because let's say a president of the campus decides not to go in the direction that we want them to go in. If they're wrong and it's catastrophic that they were wrong, they're the only ones who are going to lose their job. Not me. The ultimate responsibility. Well, currently, right now, we're going to be looking for an interim chancellor. Right? And you're going to have different constituents groups, including the bargaining units, come to you and talk to you about who they would like to see as interim chancellor. And as they come to you, no one's saying you have to do what they say, but we are hoping you listen. Because we do understand that if you choose the way we want you to choose and we're in agreement on this, if it doesn't go the right way, we'll accept part of the blame for it. But if you go in a different direction, we will also hold you responsible for it. Because if it doesn't work out during a time like this, you better be ready for the wrath of a bunch of bargaining units who said, I told you so. I told you that this wouldn't work out, and these are the reasons why. We'd always hope that we're wrong. Because if we're right and it's a bad decision, it means our district will suffer. And if our district suffers, that means our students suffer. This is the most serious decision that this board is going to have to make in the last, in the last ten years since we chose the last chancellor. And this interim is extremely important right now. Because as I've said a thousand times before, and nobody wanted to listen, this is a bad time to change horses in the middle of a raging river. And Chancellor, our condolences to you and your family. We understand why you have to make this move. No one faults you for this. So we're in the position that we're in now. So we have to choose wisely to find someone who can guide us through this process till the next, till the next chancellor is chosen. And the last thing I'm going to say is if you have someone that you would consider as a chancellor, I do not understand why you wouldn't put them in a position as an interim. Because many of you, when the Culpeper decision came up, you talked about the idea that Culpeper as an interim was kind of like a tryout to see if he'd be a good president. And since there were no complaints against Culpeper, clearly he was doing his job. This is a good chance to also try out an interim that you really think could have that position to see if they're the right person for it. So that's our opinion with AFT fifteen twenty-one. I think you're going to hear opinions from the other. You've probably already heard opinions from the other labor unions, and we'll be talking to each other as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKeever. Anyone else?
Want to tag just a little bit because I have direct information on the elevator issue at Trade Tech that I'm sure you're going to hear back shortly. Trade has, and I think this is a district-wide issue, the Elevator Mechanics Union, et cetera. They're, they're small. They are not that easy to contract with in our processing. And the issue comes down to our procurement process in this district is really, really slow. You guys are probably quite aware of that. And so we had last year, I believe, the existing contract that we had at Trade for the maintenance had expired. And I don't believe it might, maybe last month, you got the approval for the next one. So we finally got a new, a new service. And so since January, we have two elevators, and it's my specific building at Trade as a passenger elevator and a freight elevator. And the passenger's been up and down for the last several years. It's very old, hard to get parts for. And the last time they fixed it, it malfunctioned and trapped students in the elevator. So it's permanently out of service. Less than a couple of years ago, they repaired the freight elevator and it, and it was being used in place, you know, so students and faculty could get up and down. It also went out several months ago, and it has a a motor that needs to be replaced, and I believe it's coming to you very shortly to approval for a for a contract to have that motor repaired. And I just want to know, you know, you be aware that they have been down a long time, and the excuse is over, we can't fix it. They don't want to fix the passenger elevator. They recommend that it get replaced. So my understanding is they sent, the facility sent that to the state architect. So you haven't seen it yet. And then it hardly makes sense to spend, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars to put it on a building that's coming down in a couple of years. But we're still trying to figure out what the solution is. The plan is for the freight elevator to have an operator so that students and faculty can get up and down once they repair that. In the interim, we have moved those faculty that have requested that could be moved, have been moved to their first floor. But because of the nature of our labs and those kinds of things, it's very difficult. And we've yet to figure out how, how we're supposed to accommodate that. So that's kind of the facts behind it. Been very frustrating because it's been going on for years, and we don't seem to have consistent. My understanding is at one point, one of the trades asked for the possibility the Personnel Commission hiring an actual certified elevation, elevator mechanic, one or two of them for the district, so we can have our own people maintaining those. You know, but they do have to get that certification, and they would be part of that union. And my understanding was that was rejected, but I don't have any evidence other than anecdotal that that was happened. But as an observation, it seems to me that we have a lot of facilities with a lot of elevators, and we seem to have a lot of them down all the time. That was my comment. I hope I didn't steal too much of their thunder when they show up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, President Henderson, members of the board, and Chancellor Rodriguez. For the record, I'm Deborah Harrington, President of the Teamsters, representing our district deans. In follow-up to an ongoing issue, one that remains unresolved nearly a year after our CBA was ratified, our members who have been approved for a monthly stipend for additional duties have still not been paid. They are, as of today, receiving letters from HR stating that there is no definitive date as to when the payroll code will be active for the district to pay them. As a reminder, we have been attempting to resolve this matter with HR for at least six months and believe this should be, should have been prioritized and resolved with due diligence. I am currently working with President Dorado and Vice Chancellor Alba Lopez on the October session of the Chancellor's Leadership Academy. And we're going to do a part, a sort of interactive activity surrounding the new requirement in ed code that all employees' evaluations include consideration of DEI-related competencies. And additionally, we have coming up on December thirteenth our Fall Teamsters Membership Meeting. And I will remind senior staffs that our deans will be away from their offices that day. Finally, we would like to join the board and chancellor in honoring Mexican Independence Day and Hispanic Heritage Month and National Custodial Workers' Recognition and Appreciation Day, as well as in support of LA versus Hate Unified, United Against Hate Week and EOPS Month. I, I, I know our unit members also join in urging our students and all LACCD employees to educate themselves regarding the issues and candidates on the ballot in November. On a day like today, when we remember with solemn reverence those lives lost on September eleventh, two thousand and one, and in particular, those first responders and their sacrifice in public service, we are also reminded of our responsibilities as citizens of this republic to be engaged and informed and to do our part through our franchise to form a more perfect democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Angela Chavere, currently representing the District Academic Senate faculty on academic and professional matters. First of all, I wanted to express my support for the board resolutions on Proposition Three, Custodial Workers' EOPNES, Mexican Independence Day, and Hispanic Heritage Month, and LA versus Hate. I also wanted to announce that the District Academic Senate is meeting for the first time tomorrow for the first time this academic year tomorrow at Valley College. We are going to be also passing, voting on a resolution in support of the fifty-five-year anniversary of EOPS. We will also have a discussion and action item on a legislative proposal to fix AB seventeen oh five. And I want to thank the trustees who have signed off on, to support that because we are, it is clear that there are problems with AB seventeen oh five implementation, in particular in the STEM programs and in other areas. We're also going to talk about parameters for AI and instruction as well as vote on the approval of a new subject called Legal Interpreting. On Friday, September twenty-seventh, we will be meeting, we will be holding the summit at Wesley College. So this is joint summit with the administration. I want to thank the chancellor and Vice Chancellor Nicole Alba Lopez for their support with this event. This event will be in person. We will be focusing on a number of important issues that we are facing as faculty right now, including implementation of AB eleven eleven, common course numbering. As you may know, there are six courses that have gone through the initial phase of alignment. Those courses include two English classes, statistics, and a few others. And then the next batch of courses are going to be starting discussions in October. So this is a work that is going to impact all disciplines and all faculty, all colleges. We also are going to be focusing on credit for prior learning as well as obtaining a legislative update. I did want to also, you know, extend an invitation to any of the trustees who would like to attend this event. And an email will be going out later today, I hope, with the VRC registration link. And this, this event is really, we're looking forward to very fruitful discussions. I wanted to talk a little bit about the ODYA update and the EEO Annual Certification. And I want to thank Natalie Mason Kinsey for, and others for preparing this report and the transparency in the data. And this is the first time we've had a chance to look at the outcome of ODYA complaints. And before that, anecdotally, we had heard that ODYA complaints typically didn't go anywhere. But it was really shocking to see some of the data. And I think we can do much better. The presentation that is on the website doesn't really show, it shows some data. And I do want to, I do want to thank ODYA for improving the response time to the complaints. It went on from about one hundred and eighty-seven days to about fifty-two days or so. So I think that's a big achievement. But the problem that remains is how these complaints are finally resolved. And roughly only about one percent of complaints are fully sustained, and another two percent complaints are partially sustained. Which means that ninety-seven percent of the complaints are either not sustained or still not resolved. And I think we can do much better than this. A one percent sustain rate is just not acceptable. That means that somebody who files a complaint has a one in a hundred chance of having that complaint sustained. And that is after all the reforms that we've put in place. So I think we can do better than that. And I know we will do better because we will be, we will be demanding that this district do better in this area. And this is, you know, and this is, of course, the first year that we've seen this report because this is data that we've never seen before. So again, I do want to thank ODYA for increasing the rate at which it's addressing those complaints, but we still have a fundamental problem. And the problem is that these complaints are really not going anywhere. That data is not in the report that is posted, but that data is, is in the report that is going to the state. And the student elevator issues, I mean, we've heard this before. We heard this a few years ago at East. It really pains me to hear that we're having these problems when, you know, we have billions of dollars in bond money to fix our facilities, but we can't get working elevators. So I know we can do better on that as well. And then finally, on the budget, I know these are going to be difficult budget times. And I, and I really think that we need to have, you know, continue to have difficult conversations. Where, where is the money, where are we hemorrhaging money in this district? And I think we need to look at, at our legal, our, our legal legal expenditures, lawsuits, settlements. It's just, you know, we can't afford to spend millions of dollars on these types of expenditures anymore. So again, thank you. And finally, I want to thank the chancellor. Chancellor, I know you and I have not seen eye to eye on everything, but it's never been personal, and I wish you the best in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Chancellor. My name is Chrisana Ozan, represent SCA, SCA Local ninety-nine. I just want to take this moment to reflect on the three thousand people that was tragically killed and injured on this day, nine eleven, twenty-three years ago, when terrorists hijacked four commercial airplanes, crashed them into the Twin Towers at the Wordtree Center, Pentagon, and rural fields of Pennsylvania. Many of us, like myself, remember this day like this attack on America like it was yesterday. This catastrophic, catastrophic event would never be forgotten. It had a profound impact on our country, on our country, economy. Twenty-three years later, people are still suffering from the long-term health effects of this attacks, and families are still mourning the loss of their loved ones. As we, we remember this day, I want to take this moment to honor those who have lost their lives in this horrific event and share my sincere sympathies to all the grieving families. I want to also honor courageous first responders and military, and military for serving and sacrificing their lives so we can all be safe and protected. And I, I want to also say happy National Mexican Independence Day to all my Latino and Latina brothers and sisters. Thank you for sharing your culture, for all your contributions, and, you know, all you have done for this country. And I want to thank this board for including National Custodial Day as part of our today's resolution. A lot of times, custodians are not recognized for the work they do. Custodians are, are like the first responders, meaning that they are the first, they are first in line when it comes to making sure the campuses are clean, sanitized for the students, staff, and faculty. Custodians sometimes worry about their own safety, and sometimes must encounter people that are homeless with mental issues. They sometimes deal with being bullied, harassed, working at the conditions that are unsafe and understaffed. Custodians deal with a lot of things behind, a lot of issues behind the scenes. And although this board is recognizing Custodial National Day, I think more should be done to honor our custodial staff. I brought this up before and would like to bring this up again. When it comes to recognition of our custodial staff on campus, hardly do I see someone that is recognized with an outstanding satisfactory recognition that's submitted to the Personnel Commission office. There seems to be this notion that custodians are beneath everyone and not worthy enough to be recognized through this process. I disagree with this. Being a custodian is just as important and honorable as any other job classification in this district. And what I would like to see from online campuses is that at least three custodians are recognized for outstanding work performance. are recognized for outstanding work performance on National Custodial Day at the next board meeting. I think it would not only boost morale, but it would show that custodians play a big role in an organization as well. We should, we should also do the same for the supervisors. Let's recognize the supervisors that, that are doing an outstanding job and supporting their team. Another thing I want to say is while this board is addressing sexual harassment policies and improving the policies, I just want to say that we still need to have stronger policies for non-sexual harassment. You know, our members are still being faced with bullying, harassment, and working in a toxic work environment. So, yeah, we need to try to get policies for that. And then I want to thank James McKiever for bringing up the issues with the elevators. I think I've brought this up before, a while back, about the elevators, because it also impacts us, as, you know, it impacts the custodians, our, our membership. You know, when we have to go bring, you know, items up and down the elevator, and if we don't have elevator, elevator working, of course, you know, it's going to impact us. So, yes, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ozan. Anyone else? Okay, thank you all. We've received the chancellor's monthly report, which includes activities at the colleges from the college presidents, but do any of the college presidents wish to come forward and give us some highlights?
Good afternoon, everybody. And of course, yes, I'm representing EOPS 55 fabulous. The OGs, that's all I got to say. So I won't be long, because I know that we have other presidents that want to speak up here, and we're doing a lot of events. So the one thing I do want to remind you is our 75th anniversary, our gala, October 10th. Make sure to buy your ticket. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
One highlight, one save the date, and one introduction. So one highlight, I want to share that Trade Tech was able to serve as a host for a statewide summit on student parents. It was actually amazing. Not only did it have the parents there, it had their children there, and they participated in the student panel. Second thing is a save the date. We have a annual Dream Resource Center luncheon that will take place October 17. Our Dream Resource Center, we host this fundraising luncheon, where proceeds going to assist students with tuition books and materials. And the last thing is a formal introduction. We now have our new VP of Academic Affairs, Dr. Abigail Patton. She comes from us, from Chebou College. She has a lot of success in expansion of doing enrollment, also pathways with adult ed, and working with justice impact students. And I want to have our...
Come on down.
Oh, thank you. Wow. Okay, well, it is a pleasure to be here. LA is home to me, and I'm so proud to be able to serve my community. So thank you for this opportunity, President Recorders, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, President Henderson, Chancellor Rodriguez, and members of the board. I'll be brief. Well, I want to thank President Henderson for helping kick off our convocation this year and coming to our campus. So thank you for being with us, welcoming our faculty, staff, and the students that we are serving. And also for this year, our theme is around one goal, one team, a commitment to purpose and action, and because of that, we've been focusing around completion, transfer, retention, and persistence. And we've had retreats with our department chairs, with our deans, our VPs, to make sure that we are working to help our students complete their goals and have a focus for the year, to ensure that we're supporting our community that continues to come to us. Also, on Monday, we celebrated our 95th birthday at LA City College. Thanks to ASG that helped support the event, we gave our T-shirts. It was really hot, we gave our ice cream too. But we celebrated our campus has been given to our community, is building the culture and legacy of LACC, and just proud to be part of this community and to serve LA City College. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I want to start off by thanking President Henderson for joining us at our 50th kickoff. Also want to thank Vice Chancellor Alvolopis and Vice Chancellor Lancaster for joining us as well. We had a wonderful event. And we are the youngest campus, so we're really excited that we're kicking off a year-long calendar of, of activities. Few invitations coming your way. On October 7th, we are celebrating the grand opening of our Worksore Center on campus, so we will send out invites to all of you. And I do want to extend a special thank you to Dr. Cantu for all of her work in getting the Worksore Center to campus. As you all know, the Worksore Center will have a complete wraparound services and collaboration with the city, the state, and the county, so that our students have a cadre of all of resources at a one-stop-on-campus. We're really excited to announce that Bioscience Alley Week will be started off at Mission College on Tuesday, October 15th. It's a week-long awareness throughout the county, and because of our baccalaureate, they have selected Mission College to kick off Bioscience Alley Week, so that's also really exciting for us. And finally, Mission College is bringing back our poker tournament, which is a, it was traditionally an annual event where all fundraising would go to our athletes, and we haven't had it since 2019, so we're really excited to, to bring back our tournament. That'll take place on Saturday, October 19th, and we'll extend invites to all of you. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. We're President Chancellor Rodriguez. I'm very excited. I want to, of course, invite you to the groundbreaking on October 11th of our Academic East Building at Pierce. Also, this Saturday, we are having the San Fernando Valley Goes to College Fair. There will be 31 high schools from LAUSD participating, approximately between 2,000 and 3,000 students and with their family members. 64 post-secondary reps from other colleges. Will be 13 out-of-state institutions, 22 private, 14 CSU's, seven UCs, and of course, our community college members. We also have a multitude of workshops throughout the day, which include a Black Excellence Summit that will be a kickoff sponsored, sponsored by Emoja. So it's going to be an exciting day. It's going to be hot. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Henderson, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Rodriguez, it's good to see you all for this fall session, if you will, fall semester. Just have a few things I want to share with the, with the board, with the chancellor. We have the ASIN accreditation coming up for Southwest College in October. Looking forward to our nursing program being accredited and moving forward toward the baccalaureate opportunity for, in nursing. Also, we want to acknowledge that the chancellor's office, the state chancellor's office, will be at Southwest College on November the 12th. We will be hosting them with the, at the chancellor's request, for the state chancellor's request for a leadership forum. And so please keep your eye out for November 12th invite to come and be with us. And certainly, we want to acknowledge our winning Cougar football team. We won our opening game this, this past week, and looking forward to our home game this Saturday. And lastly, we are celebrating today, 9/11, as we acknowledge the loss that happened during 9/11, the tragedy of our, on our country. But Cougars are celebrating 57 years. Today is our Founder's Day, September 11th. Thank you.
All right. Well, good to see you all, trustees, President Henderson, Chancellor. Couple of highlights for East LA College. Wanted to start by letting you know that AJCC recently announced about a couple of months ago that, based on the report of head count, East LA College is now the largest community college in the state of California. How about that? This is not by chance. The faculty, our administrative team, our classified staff have been working really hard to bounce back our enrollment, and we're proud to be part of this LACCD team, representing the largest college in the state. Secondly, we're super excited, because we have also been awarded our first baccalaureate degree at East LA College in Respiratory Therapy. This is one of several that we will be pursuing. Again, thank you to our wonderful faculty and our team for putting together a very, very strong and compelling application. Third, you might have heard that the state chancellor's office awarded us the John Rice Award a couple of months ago. This is for the work that we have been doing with our students of color, in particular the area of English and math. So we're very proud, again, of the work that our faculty are directly doing with our students and the support systems that we have with our classified staff. A couple of things, we're proud to host the Disability Summit at East Los Angeles College that will be coming up. We invite all of you to be there, October the 4th. Looking forward to working with the chancellor's office. Thank you, Chancellor Rodriguez, for allowing us to host this year. And again, I want to give a shout out to our EOPS 55 years in the making. Let's give them another round of applause. You know, this is, this was truly the first social justice program that we have for community college students. Now, in 55 years later, we continue to do great work through these programs and other affinity programs that have come after. But again, congratulations to the folks that are here. Our EOPS teams at the colleges are doing amazing work to advance equity and support for all of our students. With that, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam President, trustees, Chancellor Rodriguez, Larry Resendez, Vice President of Student Services at LA Valley College, standing in for President Ribbons. A quick update from Valley, we had a great visit with the 19 regional coordinators from the Emoja Community Foundation on Tuesday, August 27th. That visit was led by Dr. Ellie Coney and our Emoja Black Scholars Program. They were able to come and visit the college and see Emoja in action. They attended meetings to meet with LA Valley College faculty, staff, and administrators. There was a data presentation that Dr. Coney and his team provided going over program success metrics. Some of the success data that was shared included over the past five years that the program is consistently exceeding institutional standards for success and retention, particularly among Black Emoja students and multi-race students. And the gap for disproportionate impact or inequity is, has nearly been closed. There's one area that we're looking at, but only just a few students away, and once we do that, we'll have closed the equity gaps. As part of the presentation, there was a quality feedback portion where students gave feedback on the program efficacy and alignment with equity objectives. In addition, one of the highlights was they got to attend an African-American history class and spoke with these students. And they were also able to observe and participate in the Welcome Black Program Orientation, which was something that was exciting for them. We also want to make the announcement that we've now grown to eight courses for Fall 2024 for the Emoja cohort. And the key focus right now on support services is in the area of basic needs, including financial challenges, housing, food insecurity, and mental health. I just want to take a moment, I know President Limbaugh has me on the clock, but to say to Chancellor Rodriguez how much I appreciated everything that you've done for me personally, and what you've done for the Los Angeles area, the LACCD, touching literally thousands of lives. What you've done is remarkable, and I count you as one person on my hand right here, being inspiration. And we are very, very fortunate to have had the opportunity to have you as a leader. You've empowered us and emboldened us to be unapologetic in the way that we approach the work that we do. You've called us in the leadership realm, chief equity officers, and poverty busters, and I take that to heart. And when I'm with my team and I'm working with students on, at the, at the college, that goes to the very essence of what, what we really are about and should be about. And part of the reason we are that is because of you and how you've led us these last 10 years. So thank you, sir, for everything that you've done. I appreciate you.
Good afternoon. Three highlights and an announcement or an introduction. First, West has a connection to the 2024 Paris Olympics. Our track coach, Tim Bowman, personally coached on our, on our track, Isaac John Paul for the Paralympics, who won silver medal in the long jump. So we're very proud of that. We have 30 climate interns that just finished our first row of individuals who are paid to go out and work in the climate and stream. We're going to be working on 100 the next summer. We have our transfer fair on September the 17th, where we'll have 600 LAUSD students there, exploring all our programs, and in particular, our two bachelor's programs. And just a point of pride here, in our aviation program, both aviation bachelors, we have 47 people in the bachelors, which is a full cohort, and we have 300 people on the waiting list for our aviation program. So it shows that it's being successful. Finally, I would like to introduce the new Vice President for Student Services, Enrollment Management and Equity Initiatives. He is the former Executive Dean for Equity and Completion at Sierra College, so please join me in welcoming Dr. William Sims. And finally, thank you, Francisco. Thank you, EOPS.
Thank you, Presidents. Now, VP Ino, would you be open to summarizing the proceedings of your ledge in Public Affairs Committee meeting from August 21st?
Yes. So the committee met, and due to the Legislative and Public Affairs ongoing processes and procedures at the state, there's nothing really to report out at the moment, but I do want to remind folks, if you are interested in working on drafting something that the district can sponsor and support, the deadline is the end of this month. And so we hope that, we encourage you all to take part in it. It's a really good process, and we are 4 for 4 this year so far, and so we're just waiting for the governor to hopefully sign and support everything that's made it through the pipeline. And so thank you for all of you that have made public comments, shown up, had written statements, and just overall advocated for the work that we do. Thank you.
Thank you, VP Ino. Trustee Hoffman, can you please summarize the proceedings of the Budget and Finance Committee meeting that you chaired on August 21st?
Yes, thank you. So at our Budget and Finance Committee meeting, we recommended the issuance of 2016 Measure CC and 2022 Measure LA bonds. And we also approved for your, or recommended for approval, it'll be on the board today, the underwriting syndicate for 2024 for the sale of the election of the 2022 Measure LA and election of 2016 Measure CC bonds. And together, I think that was $200,000, $200 million? And then the syndicate that we approved were Joint Senior Managers Goldman Sachs and Ramirez and Company, and then co-managers Backstrom, MacCarley Berry, and also on the agenda for your approval today, and we will have a public hearing in a little while, is the proposed 2024, 2025 final budget. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Hoffman. And next up, I'll go last. The next, VP Hernandez, please summarize the proceedings of the FINPOC Committee meeting that you chaired on behalf of Trustee Vella on August 31st.
At our FINPOC meeting, we had a update from our, from LACCD Design Build on the design-build strategy and proposal around constructing student housing at our Vermont location. That was presented to the committee and was, and feedback, we were able to give feedback to that particular item. I just want to note that at our ad hoc committee meeting on Friday, that will be discussed again for any of those folks that are interested in revisiting that presentation. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Student trustee, please summarize the proceedings of the Student Affairs Committee meeting that you chaired on August 9th.
Student trustee, please summarize the proceedings of the Student Affairs Committee meeting that you chaired on August ninth.
It went well. I'm looking forward to meeting with the president on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Vella, please summarize the proceedings of the Chancellor's Advisory Committee on LGBTQIA Affairs that you chaired on September third.
Yeah, thank you. We talked, really, quite frankly, very robust meeting, but we, we met with Dr. James Wilson, Professor of English and Co-Coordinator with the Community of Pride Diablo Valley College, as well as Dr. Emily Mitchell, Chair of the CCC LGBTQ+ Summit, and the Dean of Social and Behavioral Sciences at River College, Kelly Ramos, as well as many, many other people. And that was to discuss essentially, you know, the actual programs and curriculums that are going on statewide and how this is affecting student performance in every facet, you're looking at the basic needs, issues as well, implementation at each of the colleges throughout the state of California. We also discussed Prop Three, which is on the November ballot. And this is an initiative that would essentially reaffirm the right of same-sex couples to marry in the state of California. And then also, we discussed the lavender graduation as a debrief of what happened in twenty twenty-four. And also looked at our next meeting. So it went really well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Trustee Bueno, please summarize the proceedings of the Ad Hoc Committee to Advance In-Language Instruction that you chaired yesterday.
Thank you very much. One, I want to thank all of our staff who put it together. We had around close to a hundred individuals who were present district-wide. There were lots of excellent presentations. Maury Pearl did an excellent presentation along with Vice Chancellor Alba Lopez. They brought up an interesting stat that the district has brought in from revenue from in-language courses, about $2,300,000 over two years. Fifty-five percent of all of students taking in-language are new students. And that there is a, that there is a path, that's kind of an image that's kind of clarifying itself. So as students are coming into the in-language classes, that they're going into then bilingual classes, then other regular classes. So we've identified essentially a new path, and that is through the stats. We're working on a, on a conference, statewide conference with the state chancellor on in-language to bring in other campuses that will be online. So some of the presidents volunteered to assist with that. I think we have the president from City and the president from, Mr., President McQuarters from Trade Tech, who are co-chairing that committee. So thank you for, for, for that. But what's, the numbers are increasing significantly each semester. I forget the exact number, but it was, it was pretty big. I think around two thousand, Chancellor, oh, twenty-two thousand. Oh, and Chancellor Rodriguez, we, we co, I call it co-parenting, but co-chaired the, the committee along with President Henderson here as well. And thank you, President Henderson, for doing that. So Chancellor, we expect around twenty-three hundred new headcount from in-language this semester, I think approximately, right?
That's the current number.
Oh, that's, that's.
That includes folks from, who have registered before.
Right.
That's the total headcount.
But all the twenty twenty-four hasn't come in yet.
That's correct.
The biggest difference is that we have now thirty-five for credit in-language classes. So that, that like went up by at least fivefold. And so we went a lot, went over a lot of those stats and thank you very much. And we're looking forward to the likely November meeting and then the either March or April statewide conference. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will summarize the proceedings of the Institutional Effectiveness and Student Success Committee that I chaired on August twenty-first. So we had a report, an informative from LA Southwest College where Dr. Culpepper and football coach Margay Miller shared with us the work that they're doing to support student athletes, not solely to be good athletes and win games, but to be stellar students and graduate and move on to academically and economically productive lives. And so I think we were very impressed. They didn't bring us treats, but you know, we persisted. We then had an update on what we're calling our suspicious students. We've been referring to them as bots, but what Mr. Pearl and Vice Chancellor Albo Lopez highlighted was the fact that these are not, these are actual people that are, you know, causing these challenges. So we should refer to them as such. And to refer to them as bots gives the idea that it's some, you know, electronic glitch or something, and that is not the case. And I don't remember, did we have the enrollment report? Yeah, and we tabled the enrollment report, which I don't think anyone was sad about because we get it all the time. But that concludes my report on ISS. So next up, colleagues, may I have a motion and a second on item E two, which is Board Travel Authorization?
So moved.
A move by Eno, second by Bueno. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Behams Advisory Vote. Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Veras?
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Now for resolutions, may I have a motion and a second on item F one, with, which is a resolution supporting education on California Proposition Three, the right to marriage, a legislative constitutional amendment on the November twenty twenty-four ballots.
So moved.
Move by Eno, second by Bueno. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Behams Advisory Vote. Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Colleagues, now on to item F two, may I have a motion and a second? This is a resolution in support of Extended Opportunity Programs and Services and designating September twenty twenty-four EOPS Month.
Second.
Thank you. Move by Bueno, second by Eno. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Behams Advisory Vote.
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yeah.
Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Thank you, colleagues. Can all of our, our friends from EOPS come up for a quick photo op? And colleagues, please join us for this photo. Good afternoon, President Henderson, Chancellor Rodriguez, and Amber Behar, and the Los Angeles Community College District Board of Trustees. My name is Nikki Dixon Harrison, and I serve as the EOPS Associate Dean at Los Angeles City College. And I also serve as the President-elect of the California Community College Extended Opportunity Programs and Services Association, also referred to as CCC EOPS-A. On behalf of all LACC D EOPS Directors and Coordinators, thank you for recognizing September twenty twenty-four as EOPS Month and for adopting the EOPS Resolution. By endorsing this resolution, it reinforces the district's commitment to equity and access for the most vulnerable students at our nine colleges. On September fourth, nineteen sixty-nine, the Extended Opportunities Programs and Services, also referred to as EOPS, was signed into law for California community colleges. EOPS is the original equity program in the California Community College system with a fifty-five-year track record of student success. Born out of the civil rights movement of the nineteen sixties, which marks the era to abolish legalized racial segregation, discrimination, and disenfranchisement in the United States. It was out of this era the EOPS program was born in the state of Calif, California. For over a half-century, EOPS has empowered students who face economic and educational challenges with essential support, creating equitable opportunities for students not just to survive, but thrive. EOPS students receive high-touch academic counseling, priority registration, book vouchers, meal assistance, school supplies, tutoring, college application fee waivers, campus and community referrals, unmet need grants, and much, much more. Please know that LACC D holds the distinction of serving the most EOPS students in the state of California by serving over nine thousand two hundred students. Continue to applaud with an eighty percent statewide retention rate and an eighty-one percent statewide completion rate. This would not be possible without the tireless commitment of our counseling faculty, instructors, classified staff, graduate interns, student workers, tutors, and administrators, many of whom were former EOPS students themselves and are now giving back. As we look forward, EOPS will continue to be the beacon of hope, equity, and social justice for this generation of students in our district and to ensure that all students, regardless of race, zip code, citizenship status, or ability, will have access to high-quality EOPS student support services. EOPS will continue to challenge and break down social systemic and institutional barriers to create a clear pathway to student success. In closing, I leave with you a quote, a quote from one of our EOPS students studying at Los Angeles City College. "As a single mom of three," the student writes, "it would be impossible to continue my education without the help of EOPS because I do not have a support system outside of what LACC provides. My success and completion weighs heavily on the efforts of EOPS, and I am grateful for their contributions to my family." Let us also celebrate the amazing EOPS students that are within our district, and let's give them a round of applause as well. Thank you for your time. Thank you so much. Colleagues, did any of you want to make a comment or anything?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time out of your day to come here today. And we really, really appreciate you and all the good work that you do. As you know, I work with EOPS as well at Glendale College. And honestly, we, we changed lives. So thank you so much and thank you for being here and raving the parking and everything else and leaving your campuses. Really appreciate you.
Trustee Vella?
Yeah, just again, I'm just really excited about this program and how successful it's been. And really, I think I've come to really understand how important it is, especially with my colleague here to the left who gave me the one-on-one on this program. Thank you all.
Thank you. Trustee Bear?
Yeah, thank you all for being here, being advocates. And, and like many of you in the audience, I'm also a product of EOPS. So the, the programs obviously are critical and important and, and frankly, a community inside of a larger campus community that sometimes feels strange and, and not always welcoming in terms of the spaces. But I always knew that when I got to my college campus, the, the most comfortable place to start happened to be EOPS. And so I know all of you, it's not just sort of that people look like they come from your neighborhoods. It's also the care and diligence in the staff that happens. You really go out of your way to make students feel welcome. And, and now we're on to like, I had some of the first-generation folks during my time. Now we're getting second-generation folks, right? We're getting alumni of EOPS that are able to continue the service. And, and the need is still absolutely there. And there's no doubt that the role is, is as important today as it's ever been. So thank you for your work and it's great that we get a chance to celebrate and acknowledge.
Thank you.
Well, you all are my heart. As a fellow counselor, I have the utmost respect for EOPS counselors. Academically, they have to come in with additional requirements on their master's degrees. So there's an extra level of support and qualification that they do need to have. And, you know, the way that they help students and serve students and the case management wraparound services. And it's just, it's great. And so again, utmost respect for all of you and the work that you do and fifty-five years and five hundred more. And congratulations. Thank you for being here today.
VP Hernandez?
Just echoing what all my colleagues have already said, you know, with the exception of our, our two trustees here that are actually on college campuses every day, the values of EOPS are, are things that I know that I myself talk a lot about when we talk about as a trustee, what we want to espouse throughout the district. But you all are doing the work on the ground, and that is really, really powerful. And I just want to congratulate you all for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Bueno?
Yes, thank you. I want to piggyback on what President Roman mentioned in terms of social equity and some of the folks mentioned. I was also nineteen ninety, I was a class, starting class at Cal State Northridge under EOP. And what, what was interesting is that, is that EOP in general, again, is part of the whole effort related to affirmative action, social equity, and civil rights. And it's important, I think, to recognize that that just didn't happen that year, that that took decades and almost probably a century in order to get to that point where actually EOP and these programs could be created. So a lot of, a lot of kind of what many of us have experienced and benefited have come from generations of our ancestors figuring out, fighting for, suffering, and a lot of folks not having opportunities that a lot of folks in the last fifty-five years have had. So in order to recognize kind of the celebration that we're doing today, I think it's important to recognize all those generations who did not receive the opportunities because of racial bias, discrimination, or other, other factors. And just to understand that those ideas that created EOP during that time period, we also have an obligation to create ideas that the next generations will benefit from, including me and my entire family. I want to thank everyone for that and my colleagues for recognizing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our student trustee Behan?
Thank you, Dean Nikki. My mom got her master's in communication all through EOP. My sister, her BS in biology at EOP, B and S student. My sister has her bachelor's in public administration. My sister has her bachelor's in public administration, EOP. And now, I am able to transfer to UC Merced with, through, on the wings of EOP NS. So, I thank you, and I think the program is a very, very diligent, works very diligent and very resourceful program for our students. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. And again, thank you all for the work that you do. I know you feel underappreciated sometimes, but please know, we see you and we do appreciate you. So, next up to item F3. May I have a motion and a second? This is a resolution commemorating Mexican Independence Day and Hispanic Heritage Month, which is September 15th through October 15th.
So, move. Oh, second.
Moved by trustee Bueno and second by Ino. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Behan's advisory vote. Trustee Bueno?
Oh, yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Thank you, colleagues. Now, on to item F4. May I have a motion and a second on the resolution in recognition of Citizenship Day and National Voter Registration Day, which is September 17, and United States Constitution Week, which is September 17 through the 23rd.
So, moved.
Moved by Ino.
I'll second.
Second by Hoffman. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Behan's advisory vote.
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you, colleagues. And I think, no. So, for item F5, may I have a motion and a second on the resolution in support of LA versus Hate?
So, moved.
For United Hate?
Second.
United Against Hate Week, which is September 21st to the 22nd. We have moved by Ino.
Can I get some information on this? Can we have a discussion on this?
Is there a second?
David did.
Thank you. Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I have a question about, oh, does this infringe on anyone's freedom of speech at all?
Is your mic on? Are you trying your mic?
It is.
No.
No.
No. So, LA versus Hate is a county initiative.
Okay.
And so, every year, they celebrate this initiative with a week of celebration. They do a lot of fun things, have a toolkit, and it's mainly education-based in terms of educating people about how to report hate crimes, what are hate crimes, and try to bring people together and discussions around unity. So, it doesn't stop anyone from saying what they want to say because they have freedom of speech, but it does let people know that there is a limit to what you can say and do.
So, that is infringing on somebody. It's not a limit to what you could say. It's a limited.
Well, it's not an infringement because this resolution doesn't stop anybody from saying anything.
Okay. Okay.
So, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Student trustee Behan's advisory vote.
Same.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
And then, for our final resolution, may I have a motion and a second on a resolution honoring National Custodial Workers' Recognition and Appreciation Day, which is October 2nd, 2024.
I move to approve.
Moved by Hoffman.
I will absolutely second.
And second by Ino. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Student trustee Behan's advisory vote.
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you, colleagues. Now, for item G1, we'll now turn to Chancellor Rodriguez for his reports.
Yes, thank you very much, Board President Henderson, members of the board. I'd like to start off with a couple of comments on the board resolutions to thank and recognize the board for these resolutions. These resolutions are indeed a statement of value, principle, and what this district indeed stands for. Supporting same-sex marriage, recognizing EOP NS, Independence Day of Mexico, and other persons throughout the Southwest who are Mexican heritage. The recognition that voting is sacred right, and indeed, our colleges are voting centers. The fight against hate language, that hurt and harm, and then recognizing a often unrecognized constituency in our workforce, and that is our custodians who keep our campuses safe, clean, and excellent and exceptional learning environment. So, I want to thank the board for and staff for preparing these resolutions that are really an indication of a statement of values for this district. So, that's a, I wanted to start with that. Also, in looking at the other activities of the district, I commend your reading to the Chancellor's monthly report, which has been distributed to all members of the faculty, staff, like here at LACC D. So, I commend your reading to that, that outlines the excellent work that's going on throughout the district at our college campuses and our reach into the community, where and how we make a difference, how the collective impact that we have is indeed transformative. And indeed, thanking each of you for really having, as I write in the cover letter here, having the spirit, the will, the tenacity, the corazón, as I write, to do this very important work. So, thank you to all who make this happen. Let's move on now to the enrollment report of LACC D. You've seen this, we get this daily report, and after a sluggish summer, we're happy to report that while the hit count is down just a bit, about 1% in hit count, the number of units, the unit load for students, is actually up 2%. So, that's very, very good news. And as you will see in looking at the next slide, the actual demographic that has gone up are students under the age of 20, suggesting to us that are doing enrollment programs, are flourishing, as well as students coming right out of high school, participating, and enrolling through our LA College Promise Program. So, that's very, very good news that students are enrolling and enrolling full-time at a higher rate than other parts of the population. That generally good enrollments throughout all demographic groups, for the most part, of underrepresented groups. And then, if you look at the class modality, we are at 46% remote, another 8% hybrid, and 46% in-person. That's remained pretty steady for the last couple of semesters. And if you look at the fill rate there, 70% of our online classes are enrolled that way, and a pretty good clip at 75% and 73% through our hybrid and in-person courses respectfully. So, those are respectively. So, those are pretty good numbers on the enrollment. So, congratulations to the colleges, to our outreach teams, to the faculty who are supporting and retaining our students in the classroom. And very shortly, our second eight-week classes will begin. And it's important to note that we also have other class starts throughout the entire semester, not just the beginning of the semester and the second eight weeks, but indeed throughout the semester. And our adult education classes, as you will see there, are non-credit enrollment, are very, very strong enrollments in headcount, and there, as you can see, 12% and 18% growth from last year respectively. So, very, very good work on our non-credit adult education and adult learner programs. The, so this just summarizes what I've just shared. The next slide really goes into our two presentations for today. This is the Equal Employment Opportunity Annual Certification Presentation, as well as our Office of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Access update that we get to the board. So, let me introduce Vice Chancellor Deanna Williams, who will be accompanied by Director of ODAIA Natalie Mason-Kinsey. Come on up, please. And then, we'll have a second report at the conclusion of this one.
Good afternoon. I will say this. Thanks for having us. So, as you know, we've been doing quarterly updates of all the information and good work that Natalie and her team are doing. Annually, we are required to report that good work and what the funds were used for to the state chancellor's office, and we're required to submit a form. We're required to submit a form of all that work, signed by yourself as board president, the chancellor, and Ms. Mason Kinsey, and myself. And so, we're combining those presentations into one this month. So, here we go. And I will, the majority of this will be directed, maybe. Next slide.
So, thank you. This is just a quick summary of what Title V requires us to report to the chancellor's office. We record, review, and report all the data in addition to what's going on with our actual district EEO plan. So, from the three-year plan that we just submitted, this is the annual update to that three-year plan, so that each year, we will now going forward, report every year, not just every three years, which was previously what was requested by the chancellor's office. They've made that slight change, so that's why we're back before you all a little bit sooner than you would normally see us again. As our DAS president Angela Escheverry pointed out, they've added the Report of Investigation Complaints of Discrimination and Harassment. That's also a new change from the chancellor's office that was not there before. The accounting for the EEO funds expenditures has always been there, but they've made some changes there as well. It's a little bit more detailed. And you'll see going forward, some of the changes and things that they've done is added things that were in different places for budget reporting. So, you'll see things like ADA accommodations requests for certain things that are above a certain dollar amount that come out of these funds as opposed to from somewhere else are going to be reported here. So, you'll see those changes going forward. Next slide, please. So, this is our employee data. This hasn't changed. This is something we've always been reporting. Slight change, they wanted to see student employees included. So, going forward, it will include student employees always. It did not in the past always include student employees, but that is something that was a request from the chancellor's office specifically with regard to what we were reporting. I just want to let you all know, this is self-reporting. This is not what we get to report or what HR reports. It's what individuals report to us. So, just wanted to make that caveat because the unreported and/or unknown numbers are a little bit high. I want to get better about doing that. So, that's something that we're going to focus on going forward, working with HR and others to try to have conversations with folks about, even if you don't want to report it when you're an applicant, please go back in and change it for us because we want to make sure that these numbers are reflective. But that's something that we can't go in and change for individuals. That's something they have to do on their own. Next slide, please. This is our complaint data only for the time period reported, so July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. Again, this is something that we didn't report out before, but now, we're going to be doing that more regularly so that there can be some, I'm going to say increased accountability, but also transparency in what is happening, what is going on, how many complaints, how long is it taking, who's filing them? And also, being able to have conversations about trends that we may see over time, meaning, you know, the anonymous numbers of complaints are really going up at a faster clip than the others, if you noticed that. That's something we want to talk about again going forward into this next year. And also, as we do more trainings on complaints and as we did things like implement the app, that's part of the reason that it's easier to file a complaint. So, that's one of the reasons why there are more, because everybody wants to know, why are the numbers going up so high? It doesn't always mean that there are more concerns. It just means we're making it easier for people to file the complaint in the first place. Next slide, please. So, this is information about how we expended our EEO funds that we received from the chancellor's office. The Biddle contract, for those of you who may be wondering, is what we use to give you the data on the employees regarding their race, ethnicity, gender, et cetera. Yes, we do some of that upkeep in-house, but some of the analysis that comes out of that is done through Biddle. And so, that's a contract that you all signed off on. Thank you very much for this next year. Empathable is a company that is going to help us with our empathy. We've been working with human resources and also some of our campuses. So, thank you to Southwest College. They let us pilot there. This will be rolling out this fall on all of our campuses and also here at the ESC. It's a web-based and app-based program that helps people take the walk in the shoes of others. And so, it's something that we've gotten really good feedback, especially those folks who are not our faculty per se, but they still interact with students. How do I talk to this person? They seem so different from me. How can I not offend them, things like that? This is some of that empathy training that helps them be able to find the language and the wherewithal to do that in a better way. Last but not least, working on our trainings, not just the new Title IX regulations, but also investigator certification training. So, all of the new employees that were hired in ODAIA, thank you to the Personnel Commission, have all been certified now with the necessary certification to provide that investigative work for us. We also covered decision-maker training. It'll be time for us to do that again. So, you'll see that coming up on your calendars. That is for the presidents, but also for the Board of Trustees, because you all are the appellate-level decisions. So, we'll come back to you on that. Also, the chancellor and the deputy chancellor. And the next slide. New strategies and projects that are coming. I talked a little bit about Empathable. We also want to do a climate survey about specifically professional development in human resources. It's been a while since we've done one here. And while we're revamping so many things, we didn't want to be remiss about revamping training without asking people what they really want training in. Because going back and looking at the numbers of folks who've done training, both in the VRC and other things that are already available, we want to make sure that we are, I'm going to say, updated with our offerings, but also looking outside at other resources that we have to us. Some of those resources are through the chancellor's office. But before we start talking about those, we want to find out what our employees are interested in. What do they really need? Also, talking about doing a presentation of those survey findings and making recommendations to leadership about what next steps we need to take. Also, working on conversations internally between human resources, the Personnel Commission, my office, and others, because looking at hiring, we can't just look at it only through human resources lens. We need to look at all of the lenses because it matters, right? And we want to be treating our employees equitably, whether or not they're classified and/or otherwise hired through the VHR processes. And also, a continued commitment to providing information and working towards true transparency in terms of not just what we're doing in the office, but also the money, because it's important. People want to know where their tax dollars are being spent, so to speak. Why do we need to pay X amount, and where is that going? And are we seeing any return on investment? Next slide. Oh, that's the end. And I will turn it back over to Vice Chancellor Williams unless there are questions about any of those things we presented.
I'm just going to add that in the board agenda, attack with more detail for the data with pie charts and additional information for you to review and parse out and take a look at as well.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions? Okay, I'm going to start down at the end. Student trustee, do you have any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. I did have some questions. I know that at the beginning of the presentation, you mentioned something, something to the effect that you've made it easier for people to file a complaint. That's why the numbers are so much higher.
Correct.
And then, also, something to suggesting or advising that people who are wanting to decline to state their identity or whatever they identify as, something you're just trying to encourage them to change it after the fact. So, the first, the first part of it is, it's, it, these are employee complaints or student complaints? Or it's just all in the?
All of the above. Okay, all of the above. There are students can complain, employees can complain, and even community members can file complaints through our system.
Oh, as a student, I think the, the thought behind, oh, the application is just a little bit easier. That's why it kind of sounds a little bit dismissive. And I may be wrong in that, but it does sound a bit dismissive. If these are students that are complaining, the application process probably was harsher in the past, but there still has been an increase in the numbers, right?
Correct. And I didn't mean it that way as to what you're saying, and I respect that. What I, what I'm trying to impart is that part of what the challenge was in the past was that some of these complaints were done on paper, or you had to find a person in order to turn in your complaint. And now, you don't have to find me or somebody in my office. It's a website link, and there's also an app for students that they can download. So, that made it easier. It doesn't mean that necessarily people weren't filing complaints before. I do think that it's also. I do think that it's also, I'm hoping, um, that increased training has meant that people recognize that some of what they're experiencing is something that they can complain about as well.
Yeah, and I know for us, we go to like Rate My Professor and things like that to have that like transparent dialogue. So I don't know if that's something that you guys also look to as well, you know, to see if, yeah.
Um, we don't, but that doesn't mean we can't.
And then also, um, does it matter? I I I know that in the discrimination part of it, whether or not that the the categorically, if it is black or white or 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 however that person wishes to identify or if they don't, it, do you think that the um encouraging that they do? Um, is that considered harassment? Would that be considered harassment?
No, but I think you need to be sensitive to how you're doing it. I think it could be if I was going to send out like email blasts until they actually do it or something like that.
Okay.
And that's not the intent. The intent is just to say, hey, reminder, if you would like to, here's the time when you can do this. Um, we noticed that, you know, and it and I, when I've done it in the past at other places I've worked, it's not even done for individuals. It's done district-wide. So for example, almost like we have to take those annual training things. It would just be an annual reminder to go in and look at what you filled out. And if you want to change it, change it. If you don't, that's fine.
So it's just for the sake of data?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Trustee Blomner?
Oh.
Um, VP Hernandez?
No questions right now. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
VP Ino?
Great presentation. Thank you.
Um, Chancellor? Um, Trustee Beres?
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Just um, just out of curiosity, I know we had in in the resource table comments. Our Academic Senate Representatives um made comments uh um about this present. Is, do you have any general response to it or how would you sort of? How would you sort of deal with the 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 comments that were made um from that unit?
So my response is that um there's always room for improvement. I think um as we look at the data and go through, there probably will be some responses, but right now I don't think there's enough information and we haven't kept it this way in enough time to really make an informed um statement, but I I I think there's always room for improvement as a general statement.
Thank you for that. Um, Trustee Hoffman?
Um, no questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Um, I agree. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for the presentation. We'll go to our last presentation as part of the Chancellor's report. This is the annual Campus Safety and Security Report. So I'd like to ask Captain Israel Renteria to uh to join us and to present the report. Uh, Captain Renteria heads up the Community College Bureau for the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. And he is our lead uh safety officer for the district. Captain Renteria, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, President Henderson, Vice President Ino, Vice President Hernandez, respected board members, and Chancellor Rodriguez. Uh, the first, uh, can you go on to the next slide, man? Thank you. Uh, the first subject I will talk about will be uniform attire. Both deputies and security officers wear polo-style shirt and cargo pants instead of the standard Class A uniform worn by other LASD patrol deputies. This uniform was adopted during contract negotiations to allow CCS personnel to be more approachable by faculty, staff, and students, thus delivering a client-oriented, engaging, and approachable policing style. Next slide, please. Now on to the golf carts. I am proud to say that all of the golf carts were finally purchased and delivered to all nine colleges on June 10th, 2024. Additionally, CCS personnel are equipped with bicycles to patrol the colleges in order to be more approachable by the college community. Next slide. Body-worn camera capabilities. As of March 2024, all personnel at Community College Bureau have been trained on the body-worn camera system. Currently, the infrastructure for the docking of the body-worn cameras has been installed at Mission, City, Trade Tech, Southwest, and Harbor Colleges. Uh, the installation at the remaining colleges, which are Valley, Pierce, West LA, and ELAC, is on hold as a previous company pulled out of the process with the Sheriff's Department. Uh, currently, the department is in the RFP process to find a new company to install the remaining docking stations. Next slide, please. Now on to campus patrols to utilize an electronic check-in software. In February of 2024, Build LACC D developed the GARTOAR project, which is a district-wide system with capabilities of providing campus security with an with an electronic check-in to document security assessments at key locations. Currently, all nine colleges have been assessed in collaboration with school administrators, team leaders, and and Build LACC D personnel. Next slide, please. Monthly and annual reports. Since August of 2022, monthly and annual reports have have been submitted. These reports include information on the top safety and security concerns, crime statistics, arrests by category, heat program updates, training and support unit updates, and the highlights from each respective college. Next slide. Now, now on to our ability, our ability to provide computer-aided dispatch capable of documenting and reporting statistical data. The the Security Operations Center project is still in the planning phase with Build LACC D. Uh, when completed, the SOC will provide the necessary real-time data input capability for accurate and detailed reports. However, this information uh or data is provided on a case-by-case basis. Next slide, please. Now on to our plan to address homelessness in and around the college campuses. CCS personnel have established protocols to contact, assess, respond, and refer any homeless individuals in and in and around the college campuses for services. These protocols are: one, to respond to any needs, requests, or behaviors observed; two, to refer the individuals to localized outreach, food, housing, mental health, and financial services; and three, to seek the assistance of the LASD Homeless Outreach Services Team and the LAPD's Homeless Outreach and Proactive Engagement Team. Next slide. Now on to the development of a strategic security plan. Currently, my training and support unit is uh collaborating with the district's safety and security team to develop a strategic security plan. The estimated data completion is December of this year. Vulnerability and assessment reports. In July of 22, then-Captain John Gannon and CCS personnel completed and submitted to the LACC D online college risk assessment and vulnerability reports. These were specific one-time reports specified in Appendix A of the contract, which were compiled from the onsite physical assessments conducted by the Training and Support Unit. These reports detail the observations, findings, and recommendations for improved campus safety through enhancements to infrastructure, policies, and procedures. Next slide. Now on to training for faculty, staff, and students. Since the new contract was implemented, the Training and Support Unit, which is comprised of a sergeant, team leader, and security officer, liaisons with the district's safety and security team, and provide training and emergency response preparedness across all nine colleges. Both collaborate and provide onsite training on active shooter, emergency management, mental health, critical incident strategic planning, and de-escalation techniques. Now on, now on to the most important training there is, active shooter training. While training our personnel is a major part of what TSU does, it is not the only thing they do. During the academic calendar year, TSU provided training to LACC D students, faculty, and staff. The most important training conducted was active shooter training, which was done in collaboration with LACC D's emergency manager. This training conducted, this training was conducted multiple times at every college and had over 575 participants. During this training, the participants learned what to do in the rare case of an active shooter incident, practiced barricading classrooms, and were exposed to the duties of their LASD response teams. Additionally, TSU coordinated a full-scale active shooter event at Harbor College with multiple agencies participating and working together. Next slide, please. Now on to the community policing model. In conjunction with college administrators, CCS personnel developed and adhered to a to a campus-community policing approach that will support the college's request for for a more robust college engagement. CCS personnel became knowledgeable about their assigned college and built relationships with the college community. Further, my personnel accommodated to the enforcement enforcement style preferred by the college presidents. Next slide, please. And in conclusion, CCS personnel, for myself, to my operations staff, to my sergeants, deputies, and security offers, officers, we are proud to serve uh the nine colleges and numerous facilities of the Los Angeles Community College District.
Uh, thank you, Captain.
Great. I am resuming the duties. Um, does my board colleagues have any questions? Do you want to start?
Um, first of all, thank you so much for the presentation. I'm sorry you had to compete with the EOPS the whole way.
That was great. That was great.
You did a great job. You know, I would love to find out. I've been on the board for almost 10 years and I would love to find out how our students feel now that um, now that your officers are in polo shirts and there's more of a community policing approach. I don't know, Chancellor, if we have anything planned in terms of a survey or I would love to just know if there's like a shift in how students react to having law enforcement on campus because I, my belief is that, you know, you guys are there to protect and serve our faculty, our staff, our students. And so I would love to know if there's been a shift in how they react to you all.
Let me ask uh our our the our district, the Campus Safety and Security uh Lead, uh Leonard McCray, to respond to this question.
Okay.
So we would like to know as well, and so we are presently working on a survey to find out. And so I'm working with the uh the Deputy Chancellor and also the Captain, and we're developing that survey. We wanted to be a meaningful meaningful survey. We want to make sure that we target all of the uh the total community. And so we're working on that presently. I anticipate we'll have that done prior to the end of this year.
Great, I appreciate that. And then I just want to address one more. Um, you had a slide on homelessness and I know that we have some of our colleges have more homelessness around the campus and maybe on the campus than others. But what are you doing to kind of figure out and triage who is a homeless student? And rather than referring that student just to random services, is there a point of contact, whether it be in our Basic Needs Center or President's Office, somewhere where that student can get direct help on campus for those services? Versus what do you have to do for the community? And if it's more community homelessness, I feel like we need, we we pay a lot of money to have you on our campuses. I feel like that shouldn't be entirely our responsibility. Um, and 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 how do you collaborate then with your sheriff's colleagues in that?
So if if there is any student out there that is homeless and the college administrators are aware of it, they just got to let me know. And then I can refer them to the Homeless Outreach Services Team, who has a lot of resources at their disposal, whether it's, you know, um, uh, mental health, whether it's um finding a hotel, but you know, it could be anything. Uh, but all they have to do is just call me and I can refer them to to the services that they need them.
But I'm wondering, can it work the other way? Like you, you have a group of homeless folks that you find maybe on Heliotrope or wherever near LA City College. Um, and then if you determine that three of those might be students, do you do it? Is your approach different? Uh, I guess that's what I'm asking. I'm just, I just want to make sure that we're not like criminalizing our students or they're feeling like they're being kicked off campus.
No.
And I also feel like it's not our responsibility necessarily to help with the entire homeless problem in the city of Los Angeles because you're contracted to work directly with us.
Correct. So we we had an issue uh near LA Trade Tech where there was a homeless encampment that was near the the Child Development Center. And um it was affecting the safety of the children there. So we were able to 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 coordinate with LAPD and um w- we were able to relocate that community to another location. Um, but if if for the students, ma'am, like that's, that's who we are there for.
Great.
Yes, i- if 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 they need help, if they need any, you know, services, we are definitely there to assist them.
Okay, and sorry to take up time, but I think it's important. How do you handle um parking tickets? That comes out of your operation also, right? And or can we give warnings to cars that are parked without parking passes initially or uh that that's also another issue that happens with our students?
Okay. I want to answer that.
Thanks. And then I'm done.
So presently, the uh the sheriff's personnel do not uh engage directly in parking enforcement for administrative citations. They only cite for things like handicap
Oh, good.
and red uh uh parking in a, the fire lanes and things of that nature.
Great.
Uh, there are discussions with the the campuses individually and uh because again, if the uh the president that decides they want uh the Sheriff's Department to engage in that that activity, that would be something that would be worked out in each individual campus. Uh, I know that some of the campuses have expressed that they do not want their sheriff's personnel necessarily engaged in that. You have, it's a finite resource and that's a, that's a heavy lift. And so uh they're looking at bringing in outside uh resources in order to facilitate that. And so, yes, they can do it per the contract, but it's more uh campus by campus based on that enforcement style that the president wants them to engage.
Right, for the record, I'm a trustee who doesn't like enforcing parking citations. I have a personal story about a student who was given a parking citation, came out of her math class, and the next thing you know, she was in jail for nine months for, there was a warrant. It was a complicated story. And so whatever we can do to not cite our students who are just trying to come here, go to class, so I'm happy to hear that. Thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
Trustee Bella?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Beres?
Thank you. Um. I know a couple of months back and I'm and I was struggling through my emails to figure out exactly when. I know we had um an incident at City College where there was um, I think, I believe it was a stabbing um on campus that left campus. How, the 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 question, and maybe I got the story a little bit off because uh and and for those that might remember in the audience, if if uh especially at the City College uh family there. Um, but um how are um how are we assessing in the communication in the fact that um we have others beyond LAPD? We have Monterey Park, we have Culver City. Um, and um i- in our campus communities as well. Um, when there are activities that happen in proximity or adjacent or that may come on campus and come off campus, does that end up in our report structure that you come out and report? Are are we aware? Are we monitoring? Um, like I'll use examples. Um, and Andrew will remember this, maybe maybe President Ribbons. Uh, there was an incident at Grant High School with a shooting a couple of years back where it was not on Valley. We were on alert, but how does that get sort of uh compiled and 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 assessed? Because it isn't necessarily something that happened on our campus, something that you'd necessarily respond to, but we're on alert. Um, is there any way or is it just something that's one of those uh stats that is hard to classify?
It's, it's hard, but the communication is there. So uh we had an incident, I believe it was also at a Valley, where we received information from LAPD that there was somebody that was traveling near LA Valley with a with a high-powered weapon.
Right.
And we started coordinating all of the information and then our deputies were able to detain the suspect and they recovered a, well, you know, automatic, you know, weapon.
Right.
Like literally right on the campus. Um, and so it's just all about communication, but um we can start, you know, getting all of that information, sir.
So so that's, that's not necessarily a typical incident for us, but it is this inter-agency cooperation that happens sometimes that we become aware of. But it does a- as as we sort of pursue in our contract to understand, you know, um how we use hours, how deputies are deployed. Like an incident like that could take a number of hours, for example, but I'm I'm just curious to see how ultimately it's part of a report structure to understand that these kinds of things could arise.
Of course.
And um are important and I, you know, and I, like I said, I'm I'm sorry I'm forgetting uh City College because I think it was something metro-related as well, where where somebody might have got away through the metro station adjacent.
Was.
But I have those kinds of things that I just, you know, in the end, ultimately, as we look at a safety and security report and at the end of of our period in contract, I just want to be able to understand and know that we're assessing these kinds of things that are important um for the well-being and safety of the campuses, but just may not show up ultimately and and may ha- and like I said, I I'm I'm struggling here to remember because they send us the emails and reports here. Um, but it happens over time and not everybody gets a chance to see it, especially if you're on a different campus, but when we do this public safety contract, it all happens together and how it happens in a in a in a proposal and 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 response process. But those are the kinds of things that I like I've struggled with over the years to understand and just want to, you know, if if we need to adjust or or make note that, you know, either aided or we're, you know, standing by or something like that, because I think that's probably the the best approach in that safety spa space, safety space. Um, but it just doesn't sort of land on on the books. It doesn't mean that you weren't active, you weren't doing some level of the duty uh and and providing attention to uh the situation, just just one of those things that doesn't sort of come out easily in the end.
Yes, sir. So in addition to that inter uh inter-agency cooperation and coordination, any space adjacent to the campus, that's that's Clary geography. And so all of that crime data is captured. And so there's a crime analyst that is a part of uh the Sheriff's Department team that tracks all crimes that have that occur within that Clary geography. And that information is also reported out in monthly reports and also the annual security report. It's also reviewed and assessed to determine what the impacts to the local campuses are as well. So that's an ongoing uh process where those things are reviewed and captured.
Yeah, and I believe we've had a graph that shows crime data inside and crime data outside.
Yes.
But I I I guess I'm asking the question more in terms of deployment and hours and But I, I, I guess I'm asking the question more in terms of deployment and hours and sort of, um, I don't know, impact to the kind of, maybe chancellor, if you remember the dialogue and conversation of trying to understand, you know, um, what the deputies were, were, were doing and as that, as, as part of a responsibility that doesn't necessarily connect. But yeah, maybe it's already incorporated in some other means, but I just wanted to be sure from, from that perspective.
And, and there, there, there are ongoing meetings and discussions that, that are had on the campus level for an individual college and also, uh, between my office and the captain's office with respect to, uh, enforcement posture and, and in response to whatever that crime data is. And so we look at what the trends and patterns are and, and make those necessary adjustments where we need to. Uh, if there needs to be a greater presence in a certain area, a greater focus, those are things that we talk about and that we make adjustments on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, VP Ina?
Um, sure. Just a couple of questions. Um, a, as you've probably heard, we're also doing studies and planning, we have intentions to, um, you know, build offsite, um, housing for our students. And I'm just wondering in relationship to those things, because you're currently contracted to work within our district camp, our college campuses, how, how will that work in case of emergency or facilitating support, um, for those spaces?
That's, that's, uh, that's going to be of two.
Yeah. So as, uh, as these plans move forward, and I, I've, I think I've been involved in one meeting where there was a discussion about the space, uh, that they're looking at for City College. Uh, one of the things I've expressed is that we kind of need to get ahead of this. Uh, there's some jurisdictional considerations, so it's not as simple as suggesting that the sheriff's department can cover it. We have to actually know exactly where these places are, uh, and then have the conversation about what we need to do from the sheriff's contract standpoint, if we expect that they're going to actually provide the policing. There's a local agency that has jurisdictional authority there. We have MOAs in place for our campuses now that actually reside in other agencies' jurisdictions. So those are all things that have to be considered and assessed. Uh, and until we actually see what those plans are, we understand kind of what the scale and scope of those plans are. Uh, we really can't make any determination with respect to, or any recommendations with respect to what we need from a safety and security standpoint, but those are things that we absolutely would like to get involved in sooner than later.
Um, second question, I, I know you were talking about like some of the trainings that you've been offering to our campus community. And, you know, we, we've had concerns with, um, folks having, you know, um, mental instability or issues within our, you know, some of our closed spaces like bathrooms and things like that. And it's compromised the safety poss, I mean, made some of our staff feel unsafe, right? And then the response time and just their ability to do their job has sometimes been compromised due to some of those things. And I guess I just wanted to know a little bit more about how we're, um, preparing for those incidences and possibly like the team of support. Cause I know before, right, you had said that there was one, one person that then had sends out other folks when it's more of, um, not a safety issue per se, but more of like a, um, you know, service, social services kind of situation. And, and I'd just like to hear a little bit more about that too.
More, more about the training that we provide?
Um, that or just, uh, maybe a little bit more detail to the response, like how you, how you are currently responding to those, those scenarios.
Okay. I, and, and that's why I brought my, my, my training deputy from the training and support unit.
Yay. You're the one. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
He's there right here.
Yeah. I, I think just, you know, previously in comments and stuff, um, primary concern that I have, you know, for serving students, right, and people, it's just that we make sure we optimize those kind of de-escalation, right? Support services, um, to ensure that our students are safe, um, and our staff are safe. And so thanks. And they said that there was one person that then oversees kind of everything. And so just from a, I also then follow up to that, just from a capacity stance, is that enough? And should we be advocating for more support on those types of things as well?
Sure. So, um, real quick, my name's Deputy Mike Sampson. I do the training for the sheriff's department. Um, what you're talking about is pretty much my wheelhouse. I do training and support for the entire district. So I'm that one person you're speaking about. Um, I do have a team that does assist me. However, I go and I partner with all of these VPs and presidents. They all know me very well. And when they have issues, they call me and we try to figure out the best way to train them. I think the training you're specifically talking about is the campus safety and security training, where I talk to staff, faculty and students, and we have an entire conversation about how to remain safe on campus. Other trainings that I do do are de-escalation training. Um, I was on the crisis negotiation team for two or three years, so I have experience with that. And I talk about how to de-escalate students, faculty, staff, individuals, yourself sometimes. Um, and the other, uh, training I do is active shooter training. So it's really tailored to what the campus needs. So that's how I conduct the training. That answer your question?
Uh, I, I think so, but I, I guess particularly too, when we do have a crisis situation, right? Where, I mean, it's currently, um, suicide prevention and awareness.
Absolutely.
You know, time right now.
Yeah.
It just passed. Um, and so I think just those kinds of things, because we all, sorry.
Yeah.
We all know that, right, college students is when a lot of the things psychologically come out. And so just wanted to know how your staff, um, are kind of preparing for those types of scenarios. Um, more recently at El Camino College, because that's where I work, we had a very, um, sad situation as there, there as well. And so I just wanted to know what we're doing.
Yeah. My partner, actually, his name is Deputy Jeremy Mangiagies. He's part of the HEAT team, Higher Education Assessment Team. And that's something that you guys talked about the last time we were in front of you. We really wanted to have mental health resources come to LACC D via the sheriff's department. And the way we did that is we had a HEAT deputy who was on the mental evaluation team. On September 30th, actually at Harbor College, they're having a suicide awareness. And he is linked up with the Department of Mental Health to have these conversations with counselors. So we do have that, uh, ability as well to connect and really insert into LACC D and bring the resources of DMH. And our caseworker deputy, Jeremy Mangiagies, every student service, every student services, uh, VP up here knows him very well because we work hand in hand where not only do we talk about students that have mental health issues, but also faculty, staff, we're there for everybody. They can do referrals to us through that system as well.
Do, can we get data on that? Just to know how, how useful and how folks are utilizing all of that?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll talk to my partner and I'm sure we'll get that data as soon as we can, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, BP Hernandez?
I just, I wanted to follow up on trustee Ina's question about housing. Just the example that you brought up, the Vermont site, I believe it was. So the call for service would go to LAPD. Would there be a, a reason that we would want to make sure that sheriffs were? And I just, I, I just wanted to know if you could expand on that, if there's, uh, you had talked about like further conversations. Is that just in terms of calls for service or is it actual like additional? It would be expanding the contract that we, the existing contract we have, I guess with LACC D with the district?
So a couple of things, uh, in terms of the service level and whether or not the district wants to expand service with the sheriff's department so that they cover that, that's one conversation. Uh, but then there's the jurisdictional question. So with all of our campuses, and let's take LA City College, for instance. It resides in the city of Los Angeles. That's the LA Police Department's jurisdiction. And so there's an MOA in place between the sheriff's department and the LAPD so that the sheriff's department actually can provide policing in that particular space. Uh, and so any additional, um, uh, areas that the sheriff's department would be asked to then provide policing for again, we'd have to revisit that MOA and make sure that that's covered. So we de-conflict any, uh, jurisdictional issues between LAPD and the sheriff's department. So that, those are the types of discussions that have to, uh, take place.
I clarified that. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Bwana?
No question.
Um, student trustee Bayon?
Uh, thank you first for, uh, thank you for your service. I appreciate it. I'm on campus four days out of the week. Um, and when I started, um, at LA CC, I go to City College, I did night classes from six fifty to 10 o'clock. Um, so I feel safe on campus. I, I mean, that's my own personal experience. I always feel safe on campus. I do know that, um, with the later classes, um, my only, uh, conversation with some of the other presidents on, uh, from the other campuses is having some sort of like security, permanent like parked security. Uh, you know, making sure that students who have those night classes have that, um, just that extra layer of safety when they're walking to their, uh, cars at night. So that's the only, um, uh, like kind of drawback. And then also I know with personnel and staff, um, as far as, um, going to the, the, having encampments and like some of the restrooms and some of the places that are not heavily occupied on campus. The badge in, badge out, um, to, uh, to buildings was something that we mentioned. You know, I think that it would be helpful, you know, if you have badge access to the, um, to the buildings, you know, or with using your student ID, that might be helpful and kind of cut down or reduce some of the traffic with it being, um, a public space. We understand that you can't ju, just build a wall around the campus, but, um, there should be badge in and badge, um, out access. And that will kind of cut down on some of the, the calls or the, the need for like, um, removal of encampments or, um, houseless inside those, um, you know, those, those places. So that's, that's it. But thank you for your service.
And there are access control, uh, uh, projects that are underway that, uh, all of the campuses, uh, uh, will benefit from. And so that's ongoing. Uh, and then in terms of the, uh, attending courses at night and, uh, and leaving, uh, to walk to your vehicle, all of the campuses, all of the sheriff's offices, they actually provide escorts on request. That's actually a feature of the contract. And so, uh, you can make that request for an escort if you, if you, uh, feel the need. Uh, in addition to that, one of the, the, uh, uh, things that we're actually doing, um, and we had a conversation with Trade about this, when you have a, uh, a particular class and it, it lets out on a certain day, a certain time, and you know, you have a number of folks that are walking out at night, late at night to the parking structure. One of the things that we expect that our sheriff's folks will do is they'll, they'll adjust their, uh, uh, their operation so that they ensure that someone's actually in that space during that period of time. And so those are the types of things that we look at, uh, on all the campuses to try to make sure that we're making optimal use of our resources in terms of personnel and having them in the places we need them to be. So we have that high visibility, which cuts down on the likelihood that something will occur.
I'm, I'm just, I'm sorry. I'm just hoping that it, it doesn't have to be something that is like a scheduled escort, that there could be more of like an outreach kind of thing where they're already in those specific places. Because with the safety, it's not necessarily anticipated or expected. So, you know, I can't say, oh, you know, on October 17th, I want to, you know, and I'm hoping that somebody's, you know, so it's, it's kind of like an unexpected thing. So if there's somebody there already, um, without having to request or, you know, schedule any type of appointments, I think that that would be, you know, more i, my ideal for, um, safety measures.
Yes. And we want, and we definitely want them to be proactive and, and to be there and they, you know, and not have to be asked. It was just that this, the escorts is just an extra added feature and it's actually something in the contract. I wanted to make sure they're aware of that as well.
Um, thank you. Thank you for the update. Uh, I, I want to say that, um, going into the contract, I wasn't especially, um, confident in how you all would come through in terms of addressing mental health issues and, you know, just how you, your plan for supporting students on campus. So I do want to thank you for, um, for coming through on that.
Thank you.
The report, thank you so much, gentlemen, for your time. And madam president, that concludes the chancellor's report. Thank you. Um, so now, um, the board will now open the public hearing regarding the LACC D 2425 final budget before considering adoption. So joining us virtually is Ms. Jeanette Gordon, our vice chancellor and chief financial officer to provide a brief presentation. Um, Ms. Gordon?
Good afternoon, trustee Henderson, president trustee Henderson. Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay. I'm sorry. Um, this is a, our annual presentation of our budget. Um, this is our 202425, and we say proposed final budget because it hasn't been approved yet by the board. This is our final budget for the fiscal year 202425. This budget is comprised of COLA of 1.07% and growth of 0.5%. This is state budget, $20 million for Financial Aid Administration, 12 million for East Transcript California, 10 million for the LGBTQ plus pilot program, and we're in our second year of that. 6 million for credit for prior learning, 5 million for pathways for low income workers project, increases the reimbursement rate for part-time faculty office hours. And it also includes apportionment deferrals, 446.4 million from the SCFF fiscal '24 to fiscal '25, and then 243.7 million from SCFF for fiscal '25 to fiscal '26. The, uh, impact, this total state budget and then the impact to LACC D, you see on this next page, where we see new money, ongoing money of 10 million, which consisted of the growth and COLA, which for a total of 10.9, and then we have an additional COLA for certain categoricals and 200,000 for Financial Aid Administration for a total of 1.2 million in new ongoing money. In addition to that, let me, 1.2, I mean, 12 million. In addition to that, we got an additional one-time money of a million dollars for E-transcripts. So the overall change to this budget, total new money over last year's budget for LACC D's 13.3 million. The changes from our tentative budget to our final budget, we distributed open orders and designated balances. Our designated balances were $66 million. 50 million of that were our college balances, 2 million was the ESC IT ending balance. District wide in VDK of 14 million, and we had open orders of 18 million. Our total district budget for all funds, 10.2 billion, 8.3 billion building fund, 1.1 for our unrestricted general fund, which is our operating budget, 417 million of restricted money, student financial aid of 326 million, special reserve, 128, then we have their bookstore, 29.6, debt service, 8.8, child development of 6.6, and food services of 4.9 million. This budget is based on the apportionment of 8, 12.9 million projected stability TCRB. And the revenue assumptions are projected prior year total computational res, revenue of 804.6 million and COLA of 8 mil, 8.3 million. We maintain our 6.5% general reserve and a 3%, 3.5% contingency reserve in addition to an additional 2% for deferred maintenance. The, the, uh, total budget allocation is of 1 billion 79,000. College allocation is of 733.2 million. District-wide services are budgeted at 157.1 million. District office at 39.3 with the ESC and info tech of 20.6 million. The contingency reserves, 31.6 million, and the general reserve is 58.7. And our deferred maintenance at 18.1. We have our SRP payment of 4.7 million for our second, uh, retirement incentive payment. This next page gives you the budget for unrestricted allocations by colleges. And you see the total is 733 million. And we can see here why I think East LA ran ahead of all the other colleges in the state with a $167 million budget, which is a pretty large budget. The next page is the total general fund allocation by college, which includes restricted programs also. And you see that, uh, East LA- And you see that uh East LA does stand out, but all the colleges end up with a total of over a billion dollars in their final budget. Some of the final budget, the highlights are, we still have twenty-seven point one million in recovery bo- COVID recovery block grant, Hearth and directs of six point eight million, prior year instructional material block grants of eleven point five, student equity and achievement of sixty-seven point nine million and strong workforce of twenty-three point four. And some of our notable expenditures are inflammation technology of sixty-one point nine million and security at twenty-seven point zero. And that is uh our proposed final budget that we have here for seeking your approval today.
Um, thank you, Ms. Gordon. So so now we have um Okay, um colleagues, are there any questions regarding the budget?
Can I just make a comment? Um, Ms. Gordon, thank you so much for being here. I'm sitting here feeling extremely guilty because we shouldn't expect any of our employees to have to work when they're sick. And so I really appreciate it. I know this was because we had to approve the budget at today's board meeting. Colleagues, we got a really thorough, wonderful presentation at the budget committee. So if I may, I would love to just move to approve so this Ms. Gordon could go take her medicine and go back to bed. Thank you.
Yeah, we do feel horrible because, Ms. Gordon, you do not sound good at all. So we thank you. Um.
Would we have to have public speaking before we move to approve, chancellor?
We have a
Do we need to have a public Okay, so I will hold my move move for
I know, I'm horrible. I'm sorry, Mrs. Gordon. Um, can we go to the presentation and go to, I know, I'm horrible.
Well, at least you own it.
Okay. Um, let's go to where it said um how much is ESC uh spending colleges? And then I just have a question. Hold on, hold on. No, keep going. Keep going. Uh, uh, keep going. Okay, here it is. So so does that mean that ESC is not part of district-wide? I always thought that it was when it comes to
ESC is not part of district-wide. District-wide is district for all every, the entire district. ESC is a location and IT is part of ESC. We just split out IT because IT is rather large also.
So what's an example? So to me, what's an example of district-wide?
Insurance, legal expense, those type things, retiree benefits, health benefits.
Ah, okay, okay.
Is your human resources, personnel commission, accounting budget.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gordon.
Ms. Gordon, so we do have a public speaker, uh Mr. Robert Montalvo.
Mr. Montalvo, you ready to speak? He's not responding, but he's there. Mr. Montalvo, it turns up. We'll come back to him.
No, we have to close. We have to close so that we can move.
Okay. Okay, then let's keep proceed. Yeah, okay, maybe at the end. He'll be at the end too, at the end for knowledge and matters. So, okay.
Okay, will he be the only person that wanted to speak on this? Will he be the only speaker?
Yes.
Okay. Um, anybody else, colleagues, that would like to speak? Um, sorry, Jeanette, but uh at the March, at a March meeting, DBC meeting, uh we discussed some projections of the reserves, contingency and um general reserves. And those projections indicated that within a year or so, uh we were going to drop below ten percent. So I want to know if those projections are still holding or have they changed?
Uh Angela, because those are projections, they've probably changed, but I don't know how much. We're working on an updated five-year projection right now. And it was uh two or three years before it went down below the ten. But even when it goes below ten, when we do our budget, we start with ten.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Anyone else question? Um, Gordon, we have another question.
With regard to going under ten percent, can you explain, explain that? Is that a, was that, were those projections that potentially went under ten percent? Or can you explain that a little more?
In the uh collective bargaining agreement, there's an agreement that if the board, if the district has insured a reserve is less than ten percent, the, any salary or COLA increase would have to be reduced by enough money to bring the district back up to ten percent before it was granted. That's why we talk about the ten percent. We start with ten percent every year, but that also became part of the collective bargaining agreement so that we wouldn't give out salary increases that would dig into our reserves.
So are there any projections in the next two to three years that show going under ten percent?
Um, let me think. I don't think it was in the next two that it was under ten, but it was so under ten at one point. And I believe Deborah's on the line. She may be able to look it up right quick. But it was at least two years down that we were looking at that. And as I said, we're working on updating those uh projections and they will probably be coming to our next budget and finance committee meeting.
So with regard to, so in the next ti- two years, there are projections that we might go under the ten percent reserve?
Uh trustee, well, no, I can't say for sure unless I can find the document and tell you what year it showed that we did go under ten.
Okay. Oh, you're asking to stand by.
And what did you just say?
Are you asking us to wait until you find the document or?
No, no, I'll ha- I'll get, I'll get back to you unless Deborah is on the line and she's found it. Because I don't, I can't, I can't put my fingers on it right now.
I'm I'm just wondering what what the effect of potentially going under ten percent in the next two years would have on this budget?
On this budget?
Yes.
Um, it wouldn't necessarily have any impact on this budget. That projection could becoming reality would depend on how we spend this year and next year. Our budget is set. And if we spend this year and we stay within our budget, we will probably not have that happen. But if we spend more than our budget, then it might happen before or it might happen even after that. But that's why we're going to update our projections so we can stay on top of it.
If I can add something to trustee bonus question and to Ms. Gordon's response. Are those scenarios, I think we we may recall them as yellow, green and red uh scenarios. That is um green being most favorable, red being worst case scenario that we could contemplate. We have to project those, but those are have accompanying assumptions with each of them that correspond to significant enrollment drops to cor- that correspond with revenue shortfalls in the state of California uh and other assumptions. So there's a whole series of assumptions that are associated with each of those particular scenarios. So the one that was described as under ten percent would have to have corresponding factors of state revenue drops as well as significant uh district-wide enrollment drops.
But he- here's, here's what I heard last year, chancellor. Let me, tell me if I'm, if I'm incorrect. So at one point, we were at, um, I remember hearing a nineteen percent. We've gone through different enrollment reports, one point nineteen percent. Then we were at thirteen percent, then we were at eight percent. And right now, we're at one percent head count down, correct?
Head count, yes.
Okay. So at around the same time, and I don't have a chart, just going off of memory, around the same time last year, I remember our enrollment being up.
Was.
Okay. So if our enrollment right now is actually down, is that a correct assertion to say that our enrollment is actually down by one percent?
No, no, the head count is down, but the unit load is up, actually by two percent.
At two percent, okay. So if we're at at around this time last year, I have a memory of our head count and enrollment being higher than it was right now.
That's correct.
Okay. So there's li- the likelihood that our enroll- head count and enrollment is going to go down in the next few months. Of course, none of us know a hundred percent.
I don't, I don't.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Gordon.
No, I don't, I don't think that's, I I think that's not the information we get out of an instructional EPI. Enrollment has been actually going up, but we're still in restoration. We still haven't gone up enough to recover from where we were before the, before COVID. So I don't think our enrollment today is higher, is less than it was last year this time.
Okay. So I I I guess that's my concern, President Henderson, is that, is that our, our main sources, our main source of income is enrollment. I understand the student fu- funding formula with regard to all the things that go, go through it. But my biggest concern is if we see an enrollment drop or more of a cleanup in bots, then we might go down more negative in head count and enrollment. And if there are assumptions that are, that are still to be determined and we're asked to secure a budget, and again, we have the June twenty twenty-five um end of whole harmless, I still don't see how we have calculated how we're going to deal with June of twenty twenty-five. I- is there anything that I'm saying that you would find incorrect, Ms. Gordon?
It's, you know, it's very difficult for me to discuss this without being able to look at our numbers because you can see how our numbers were going. We were, based on different assumptions, as the chancellor said, it depended on which one of those items we looked at. We normally look, my office usually looks at the red number because I'm like, I'm more conservative. But when we talk about it, we talk about the green because that's the more optimistic view. And I think under the red view, we were probably going under ten percent within the next two years. But since I don't have the document in front of me, I really don't want to say because I don't want to be held to something that I'm saying and I'm not sure about what it is. When we're talking about actual documents that we put out with the information.
Uh, thank you for that, Ms. Gordon. Uh, trustee, go ahead.
Yeah, um, hi, Ms. Gordon. Uh, I stepped out for a minute, so I didn't really get a lot of um information on your um presentation. So I apologize if this is something that you already went over, but um, and if I sound anyway, please chart it to my head and not my heart, but um twenty million for the Financial Aid Administration and then half of that goes to the LGBTQ pilot program? Are we paying for weddings?
What did you say?
I I think I understood the question. Ms. Gordon, let me take the question. Those are two separate budgets, uh the LGBTQ allocation. Uh, that comes from the state of California.
Yeah, this is the state budget here.
Yeah.
Okay. So so that's why I said I, that's why I I led with, I wasn't in the room. So these are not, this is not our budget.
No, this is the state budget.
Okay, that's it.
If you go to the next page, you should be able to see the district's portion of that. You look at the bo- go to page three at the bottom. You see here it says twenty million for Financial Aid Assistant. But we only, we don't have, we don't have anything there. That's not the right place. Financial Aid Administration. See, we only got an additional two hundred thousand this year.
Um, I didn't understand what she said.
Uh, Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
Can you repeat what you said? Sorry.
The twenty million dollars is a statewide number and the portion for LA from here on our report, I only see two hundred thousand, but it's definitely, the twenty million is for the statewide, all the ca- all the community colleges. Financial Aid Administration for all community colleges.
What is our, the what's on our budget? That's what I'm asking.
What is what?
The student trustee wants to know what's on our budget.
And two hundred thousand though.
Our budget for the district, if you look up page three, where it says LACC D is what we have and where it says system is the statesman.
Let me see if I could fill in some of the gaps. When it's a state apportionment and then the apportionment is distributed by FTES, we generally get somewhere about nine percent, whatever that state apportionment is because of, we're about nine or so percent of the state enrollment. If it's done and it put into a pool, you have to apply for it, then there could be a maximum application. For example, the LGBTQ ten million dollars is not distributed evenly to every single community college in the state. One has to apply and I believe the the limit is a nine hundred thousand dollars or so. And we've received that over the last couple of years because we've applied and received uh that uh as a multi-college district. So the allocation is not always fixed. It's, if it's a fixed pool and one has to apply for it, uh then uh then then one does so. If it's by, if it's by number of students and FTES, then it's distributed to the districts, then we in turn distribute that to the colleges, depending on their particular enrollment.
Thank you for that. But, okay, so based off of what you're saying, and I want to make sure I fill in some gaps as well. So it says three hundred thousand here in the second column, and then it says five hundred thousand here. So which still is more?
Wow, I'm sorry, which line are you looking at?
I'm looking at the second. So it says three hundred thousand, right? Am I, am I, I'm in the right column?
Where are you looking?
I'm looking at the second column for LACC D. It says three hundred thousand, right? For Financial Aid Admin, and then it says LGBTQ five hundred thousand. Am I, is there still more? Oh, and now it's more. So with half for the state, but now it's more.
I don't see it's five hundred. I see that you're talking about the three hundred thousand that's negative. Oh, no. I only see Financial Aid Administration at the top, ongoing, and then Financial Aid Assistant at the bottom. So I don't see, I don't know what question you're asking.
On the line item, is the LGBTQ pilot program more than the financial aid? Is what I'm asking, because that's what it says.
The finance, the LGBTQ is a three-year program where the total system amount was ten million dollars and distributed. We got our portion already, so it's no, no more money coming out of this. This five hundred thousand is what we got for this year for LGBTQ. But that doesn't mean that they, they get, they got LGBTQ got five hundred thousand this year, which was part of LGBTQ got five hundred thousand this year, which was part of a three-year grant. And that's just for LGBTQ, that doesn't mean they're getting more money than the Financial Aid Administration.
But it looks like the state reduced by three hundred, by three million. And so our portion of that was reduced by three hundred thousand. That's what it looks like.
In twenty-three, twenty-four, it was reduced by three hundred thousand.
Right.
But that's not the allocation for Financial Administration? There's, that's not
No.
For Financial Administration is quite significant, then that, and those aren't the financial aid dollars distributed?
No, they aren't.
That, that's it, yeah, the financially distributed both local, state, and federal is in a different area. So that totals somewhere in the two hundred to three hundred million dollars per year that this district distributes in state and federal financial aid. That's not it. Administration is our systems, personnel, et cetera. So it looked like they had to take off system-wide over three million dollars to, to meet the state budget.
The question, student trustee, that LGBT students are getting more financial aid?
Well, that's what is, that's what, that's what I led with. Yeah, I, I wanted to understand how the breakdown is, but if you're saying that the numbers are not correct or if they're not reflective of the actual budget to the pilot program, then I can see where there is some confusion because the numbers that you're saying, Chancellor, is not, they're not here, so that I'm only going based off of what's here.
Well, the LGBTQ allocation is a, a one-time allocation for this year?
No, I, I get, I get that, but it, it, but what it says here, so the first question that I asked, I was led to the second column. So I went to the second column, and the second column has three hundred thousand here and then has five hundred thousand here. So I mean, I think that that, that warrants the question.
Yeah, yeah, so the way it's stated here, we're actually reducing three hundred thousand dollars on the Financial Aid Administration for the district and receiving, and that's for that, those purposes, and receiving five hundred thousand dollars for the LGBTQ allocation as a one-time, that is correct.
So I'm going to assume that the parentheses means reduction, but it, there's no, there's no like legend or anything like that that says that.
Parentheses means reduction, yes, that's correct.
All right, thank you, uh, thank you, Ms. Gordon. Uh, so now we're, um, Madam Board Secretary, Mr. Moncaval, back?
No, but I let him know through email that he can, he signed up for non-agenda matters, he can say, say statement there.
Okay.
Yeah, because he's there on it anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, he's there.
Thank you, so now, um, we're going to close the public hearing. And now colleagues, may I have a motion and a second to adopt the LACC D twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five final budget? Thank you, moved by Ino, second by Hoffman. A roll call, please?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote.
I'm going to aim for lack of clarity.
Pardon me?
Abstaining for lack of clarity.
Okay, trustee Boulna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Thank you, colleagues. Now we have for our review, the combined consent calendar for items J one through V fourteen. These items include consent calendars for human resources, personnel commission, academic affairs, and student services, budget and finance, business and facilities. May I have a motion and a second to adopt the combined consent calendar for items J one through V fourteen with the exception of item T fifteen?
So moved. Okay.
Thank you, we have a motion by Ino and a second by Hernandez. Roll call, please?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote. Trustee Boulna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
He stepped out.
I stepped out, trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Vedas?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, colleagues. Now may I have a motion and a second to adopt business items W one through W thirteen?
So moved.
Moved by Ino.
Okay.
Second by Hernandez. Roll call, please?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote. Trustee Boulna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman? Absent, trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Yes.
Thank you. And now I have a motion and a second to adopt facilities items X one through X fourteen with the exclusion of item X three.
So moved.
Moved by Ino.
Okay.
Second by Hernandez. Uh, roll call, please?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote. Trustee Boulna?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman? Absent, trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Yes.
Thank you, colleagues. Um, now, before we proceed to vote on the next two action items, I will read the following language for the record. Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five three C three, which is part of the Brown Act, we are required to make an oral summary of proposed action on the salary, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits for all executive level positions as defined in subdivision D of Government Code Section three five one one point one during the open meeting in which final action is to be taken. In our case, we need to provide such summary for positions such as the chancellor, vice chancellors, and college presidents. The item now before us is to approve the contract extension of employment and step advancement for Dr. James Lancaster, Vice Chancellor of Workforce and Economic Development and Adult Education, effective September one twenty twenty-four to June thirty twenty twenty-seven. Dr. Lancaster's salary will be step four, which is twenty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-six thousand seventy-seven cent per month of the Vice Chancellor and College President's salary schedule, and he will be entitled to the same health and welfare benefits as are received by other unrepresented classified administrators, including retiree health benefits. Dr. Lancaster will continue to receive the five hundred dollar per month power car allowance. May I have a motion and a second to approve Y one?
So moved.
Moved by Hernandez?
Second, yeah.
Sorry.
Ino, second Hernandez.
He, okay, moved by Ino, second by Hernan, yeah? Okay, thank you, sorry, you guys. Um, roll call, please?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote.
Yes.
Trustee Boulna? Absent, trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Vedas?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, next item Y two, the next item is to approve the extension of contract employment by, for Dr. Kathleen Burke, interim deputy chancellor from October first twenty twenty-four to January thirty-first twenty twenty-five. Dr. Burke's salary will be step one, which is thirty-one thousand six hundred two thousand seventy-four cent per month of the deputy chancellor's salary schedule. Uh, Dr. Burke will be entitled to the same health and welfare benefits as are received by other unrepresented administrators, including retiree health benefits, and she will see, will receive the five hundred dollar per month power allowance. May I have a motion and a second to approve item Y two?
I'll move to approve, I will second.
Moved by Hoffman, second by Ino. Roll call, please?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote.
Yes.
Trustee Boulna? Absent, trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Yes.
Thank you, colleagues. Um, item Y three. Okay, may I have a motion and a second on item Y four with the, which is the memorandum of understanding at the ESC?
So moved.
Moved by Ino.
Second.
Second by Vella, thank you. Roll call, please?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote.
Uh, can you, um, I want to look at this real quick, can you go, choose me last? Thank you.
Need to tell him?
Yeah.
So you can go with the rest of them.
Okay, trustee Boulna absent, trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Can I, can I ask a question? President Henderson? Go ahead. So it looks like the, so the budget for this position is coming from the district office? So going forward, does Pierce has to build that into their subsequent budget, or how does that work? So this is just for one year?
It's for one year, yes.
Okay, thank you, that helps.
Good question. Okay, now, um, next we will move to the recommendations from the chancellor. Chancellor, would you please provide a brief explanation on the next five action items?
Yes, happy on Z one, that's a resolution authorizing the issuance of Measure LA General Obligation Bonds. Uh, as noted by trustee Hoffman, that this was reviewed at the Budget and Finance Committee, so we're recommending uh, your approval for item Z one, this allows us to sell bonds under Measure LA.
Um, yeah, yeah, I'd like to move to approve. Unless you wanted to take one or two together, I don't know.
Yeah, the second, the one
Take them together?
Are the same matter, this relates to Measure CC bonds, so if you want to take both of them together, in general counsel, can they take both together, do those separate each issuance separately?
I would separate the two items.
All right.
Yeah, they're supposed to do separate actions, so.
Right, and I already gave it explanation, so I move to approve item Z one.
Thank you, moved by Hoffman.
Second.
Second by Ino. Roll call, please?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote. I've seen. Trustee Boulna absent, trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Okay, item Z two relates to the same procedural matter, but this allows us to authorize issuance for Measure CC, general obligation bonds, Siri E, uh, and we would recommend your approval, this allows us again, so uh, bond so that we can continue to construct facilities throughout the district, this is for, through Measure CC.
And I move to approve item Z two.
Motion made by Hoffman, second by Vella. Roll call, please?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote. Trustee Boulna absent, trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Yes.
Madam President, members of the board, item Z three relates to, and on behalf of Dr. Jim Limbaugh, I request to name the West Los Angeles College Watson Center Plaza in honor of Laura Peterson, uh, who passed away in twenty twenty-two. This was brought through, as described there, the local governance procedures uh, at Westlake College, uh, Laura Peterson was instrumental uh, in, uh, in the programs that surround the Watson Center. So this is a way that we can perpetually honor her by honoring and naming the plaza at the Watson Center in her honor. So we're recommending approval. Moved.
Second.
Thank you, colleagues. Moved by Vella, second by Ino. Roll call, please?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote.
Yes.
Trustee Boulna? Absent, trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, congratulations, Dr. Limbaugh, it's a great honor for, for Professor Peterson. Going on to item Z four, this is the second read for Board Policy thirty-four thirty-three, uh, in which, uh, it's titled Provision of Sexual Discrimination under Title IX, and it is a second reading. We've brought this in front of you before, it's gone through all the appropriate governance channels, and we're recommending approval.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Moved by Hoffman, second by Ino. Roll call, please?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote.
I've seen.
Trustee Boulna absent, trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and the last item is item Z five, inconsistent with, um, um, other matter. This is the second read that we're bringing to the board, this is Board Policy thirty-five forty, related to sexual and other assaults on campus and in-campus programs, so we recommend approval, and, and the red item that, items that you see there is the new language. Uh, much of it are conforming with Title IX and other new laws.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ino, second by Vella. Roll call, please?
Student trustee Bayham's advisory vote. Trustee Boulna absent, trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Yes.
Thank you, colleagues. Now, board members, there is one notice and one informative, no action is required at this time. Um, Ms. Vega, interim general counsel, will provide a brief report regarding item AA two.
Good afternoon, Board President, VPs Hernandez and Ino, board members and chancellor. Um, today I have a notice report to provide to you regarding a whistleblower complaint filed against trustee in seat number seven regarding disclosure of closed session discussions. On June sixth, twenty twenty-four, we received a complaint filed pursuant to Board Policy sixty-four ten in which it was alleged that trustee in seat number seven was involved in breaching the confidentiality of the closed session meetings and engaged in communications in violation of Brown Act outside of properly noticed board meeting. It was further alleged that trustee in seat number seven used their position on the board to overturn the vote, not to renew a counselor's employment contract. In addition, it was alleged that trustee in seat number seven improperly contacted board members, both directly and indirectly through another faculty counselor outside of a properly noticed board meeting in an attempt to persuade the board members to change their votes. The complaint was assigned to an outside investigator, Ms. Precious Edam of LaZano Smith on June twelfth, twenty twenty-four. She conducted a thorough investigation of the complaint, which included interviews of fifteen witnesses and review of relevant documents such as emails and other documents provided by witnesses. There are five findings, and findings are as follows. Number one, the allegation that on March sixth, twenty twenty-four, after a closed session, a phone call between trustee in seat number seven and the faculty counselor whose contract was in question occurred that disclosed closed session information, which was used to support the reconsideration or wrongful non-renewal of the employee's contract, not sustained. Finding number two, the allegation that on March sixth, twenty twenty-four, after a closed session phone call from trustee in seat number seven with another faculty council occurred, which disclosed closed session information, which occurred or was planned in the lobby, um, to allow the board to reconsider the wrongful non-renewal of the faculty's counselor's contract, not sustained. Finding number three, the allegation that on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, at a LACC D Counseling Caucus meeting, trustee in seat number seven promised that the non-renewal of faculty counselor's contract would be overturned, not sustained. Finding number four, the allegation that in spring twenty twenty-four, trustee in seat number seven serially contacted other board members both directly and through another faculty counselor outside of sanctioned public meetings in an attempt to change the board's vote regarding non-renewal of the employment contract, not sustained. The last finding number five, the overall allegation that trustee in seat number seven was engaged in conduct in violation of district policies, not sustained. As a result of the lack of substantiation of these allegations, the Office of General Counsel will now close the file on this matter and advises no further action at this time. Are there any questions?
Colleagues? It appears not, thank you, Ms. Speaker. So now on to item, um, BB, would any of my colleagues like to make any announcements or indicate future proposed actions for the board?
Um, I, I'd like to request that the board adjourn in memory of, um, uh, Richard Ellatori recently passed and had his life celebrated this past Monday. I know he was a fierce advocate of Eastlake College, um, and educator himself prior to his work in politics, but, um, but certainly um, somebody who's legendary in east side politics and, and with his involvement. But if we can adjourn this meeting in, in his memory and, and inform his, his, his family that we've done so.
Thank you, anyone else? VP Hernandez?
I just wanted to note and I guess ask when the, we had a procurement audit that was due to take place to be presented to the board in June or July, and then I believe it was to be presented to the board in June or July, and then I believe it was September, October. I just, I want to inquire and I guess put a note that I think we're still expecting that audit?
That is correct. The work is expected to be done this month, so we will shortly thereafter-
At the board meeting next month? Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, I would like for us to adjourn our meeting in honor of Mr. Frankie Beverly and Mr. James Earl Jones, who we've lost this week. So now for our public comment. The First Amendment and the Brown Act guarantee a member of the public the right to criticize a public employee or public official in the performance of their duties. However, speakers are encouraged to focus their comments on issues relevant to the conduct of the public's business, rather on private or unrelated matters. Speakers are reminded that the Brown Act and First Amendment do not protect the mandatory statements made, which may subject a speaker to personal liability. But right now, we have 11 speakers. The first speaker is Edie Moore.
Yes, I'm here.
And for the record, this is regarding, which item is this on the agenda?
None of me attended.
I mean, what item? Are all of the speakers speaking on this thing?
The first few five are, and then the second category, starting with Joseph, with the elevators.
Okay. All right. Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Moore, go ahead. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I stand before you not only as a faculty member, but a passionate advocate for our students' educational experience and safety. As a proud 19-year faculty member of the Los Angeles Harbor College Department of Nursing, one of the top nursing schools in the state, I'm deeply concerned about the environment in which our students are learning. Our nursing program's mission statement emphasizes accountability, commitment, student diversity, personal and program integrity, lifelong learning, professionalism, and high academic standards. Regrettably, recent events within our department have called these values into question. We are facing a troubling situation involving a faculty member who has engaged in questionable relationships with students, including regular social outings that include alcohol and sexual relationships with at least two married students, each with children. One of these relationships resulted in a pregnancy while the student was enrolled in our nursing program, leading to significant consequences for her family. Student feedback from course evaluations has raised serious concerns. Comments suggest I am very upset by the gossip I am hearing about Mr. No Name sleeping around with students, reflect a culture of discomfort and fear in our department. Another student expressed, being in their nursing world for a very brief moment, I have heard about different women with No Name, who he slept and drank with. I do not believe faculty didn't see this since it was a common knowledge to students. And I believe because you were short on nursing teachers, uplying I was turned. I believe I was put in a situation with a predator that I should have never been put in. When one of these affected students approached me with the details of the relationship, I promptly reported the situation to our administration, leading to a Title IX complaint. Unfortunately, the outcome stated there was no policy violation and deemed the relationship consensual. This conclusion contradicts our Title IX training, which emphasizes that relationships involving power differentials are inherently problematic. It also goes against a ruling by our own Supreme Court that recognizes significant power differences can lead to harassment, undermining the validity of consent in such circumstances. I also believe that there were details of the complaint overlooked by the district lawyers where consent, sexual harassment, and a hostile work environment were not sufficiently addressed. At the heart of the issue beyond the obvious ethical concerns is the inherent power differential that exists in the student-faculty relationship. Faculty hold considerably authority over students, influencing their grades and professional trajectories. This dynamic complicates any notion of consensual relationships. When a faculty member engages with a student outside the classroom, it creates an imbalance that can lead to pressure, confusion, and fear. Students may feel they must comply, believing their academic success is tied to their willingness to engage in personal interactions. Education is a sacred space, a sanctuary for learning and growth. Our community college is a place where academic excellence is pursued and lifelong skills for community service and health care are developed. To uphold this environment, the faculty of Los Angeles Harbor-
Dr. Moore, your time's up.
Nursing program advocates for a non-fraternization policy between students and faculty.
Next up, we have Chris Brust.
Good afternoon. I'm Chris Brust. I'm the student success advisor for Los Angeles Harbor College Nursing Program, which, as you have heard, is extremely challenging. As part of my job, that entails academic and clinical support, problem-solving assistance. And as you can imagine during these things, I hear a lot of venting and therefore emotional support. During the time period of inappropriate behavior by Mr. No Name, I received zero complaints. The students were not talking about this. The faculty was unaware. However, after he went on leave, several students and alumni came by the office to check, to make sure that he was gone, to express relief that he was gone. And during that period of time, they reported the same things that Dr. Moore was talking about. The reasons that were reported was drinking with students, inappropriate behavior, both verbally, and one of inappropriate touching from a student. None of these students wanted to report Title IX. None of these students wanted it to go up the chain. They just expressed relief that he was gone. And so I strongly support some sort of non-fraternization policy. It's too late for this group, but since we have been forced legally to take him back into the program, I think we need to take steps to protect our students.
Thank you. Next, we have Julie Armenta.
Yes, I am one of the faculty members of the nursing program at Los Angeles Harbor College. And I am here in support of the rest of the family, faculty members that can't be here because of work commitments. And I just want to express the fact that we, as a group, we are in 100% unity with regards to implementing a non-fraternization policy and to affirm for the comments that Ms. Moore had made, Ms. Brust, and the comments that are going to be followed by Mrs. Arzaga and Ms. Yamagawa. I urge you to please to protect our students, that we implement a non-fraternization policy.
Thank you for that. Next, we have Jenny Arzaga.
Good afternoon. My name is Jenny Arzaga, nursing faculty at Harbor College. I just wanted to say that the Los Angeles Community College is the largest community college in California and among the largest in the nation. Our mission is to foster student success in a supportive learning environment. The issues and concerns we speak of should not have happened, and we have failed our students. This news has circulated in the public and social media, therefore failing the community that we serve. It is damaging the reputation of our nursing program, and if these behaviors persist, we will look like we have done nothing. It is incumbent that the district comply with our requests and hold the members of our institution to the highest regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Yamakawa?
Good afternoon, board. And as Julia Armenta said, there's six faculty members present at the board meeting. Some had classes or clinic at this time, but you need to know that this was unanimous faculty position regarding this matter. We sent two letters of concern to our president, signed by 100% of our nursing faculty. I was the one interviewed by the lawyer in this case. I'm the chair of the Health Sciences Department. And she told me she was surprised that we did not have a non-fraternization policy in place. And the first thing that she would do is recommend to develop one and put it in place. And we feel like it's fallen on deaf ears. There's no, there's been no talk of a non-fraternization policy. And so this instructor is, was allowed to return to the classroom without a policy in place and without any discussion of non-fraternization. The zero tolerance policy needs to apply to all layers of the L A CCD, especially with students and faculty. This is for the protection of our students who trust us and who we serve. Since no action was taken towards a non-fraternization policy, we are coming to the board for assistance. Thank you.
No, thank you. Were those the only speakers on that particular issue?
That's, that's for that group. Now we go down to six.
Okay. So now we have Joseph Geary. Geary? I apologize if I-
No, that's no problem. Joseph Guerrieri.
Guerrieri.
Yes, so I'm the AFT 1521 chapter president from L A Trade Tech, in case you couldn't tell from that. I'm here with some of my faculty colleagues to express our concern about the ongoing issue of non-functioning elevators at L A Trade Tech. We decided to speak to you today because we had a Work Environment Committee meeting on Monday, where several faculty shared their distress over lack of access to working elevators. I was also presented with a petition yesterday, signed by several hundred of our construction students, imploring us to fix the elevator in their building. We've been dealing with this elevator issue for several years, and it seems that we are still unable to find a permanent and reliable solution. It's become an urgent problem, and we need to come up with a solution right away. As you know, Trade Tech has a smaller campus, so many of our buildings are multi-story. As a result, I understand that Trade Tech has about as many elevators as the other eight colleges combined. So as you can imagine, when we have multiple elevators go down for weeks or months at a time, it can cause tremendous complications. I've received numerous accounts from faculty about the challenges they face dealing with these elevator outages, not to mention the impact this has had on those with mobility issues. In an effort to address prior concerns, the college switched our third-party elevator maintenance fender, but the issues persist. So it's apparent that our reliance on third-party contractors to maintain the elevators is not working. Today, I asked that the district look into hiring a state-certified elevator mechanic as a permanent district employee. I also asked that the district expedite current and future procurement of any parts or services required to repair our elevators whenever there's an outage. Any repairs for non-functioning elevators should be treated as an emergency and shouldn't be procured in an expedited fashion. We can't keep asking students, faculty, and staff to wait months before elevators are repaired. Thank you for your time and consideration. I have a copy of the student petition, which I'd be happy to speak with. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Edith Garnica Diaz.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Edith Garnica Diaz, culinary arts instructor at Central Street Tech. And we are here to represent the department and to explain to you that we're having an issue with a very new building. It's only about three years old, and we have an elevator that keeps on having issues with malfunctioning. And basically, our students get trapped at least once a week. And my concern is that we are using it as a transportation for carrying all the ingredients. Sometimes we have somewhere between 400 pounds to 600 pounds of flour that we have to transport to the second floor. And we have students with issues that can lead to other issues because we have knives also. And if they have anxiety and other mental issues that, you know, we are aware of, it's very concerning. So Monday, we had a student group that actually was trapped, and they forced the door open. So it's getting a little bit out of control in the sense that it keeps happening every single week. We've only been open for two, three weeks, and it's happened three times already. And I just want to make sure that it's on the record and then to save the issue because we do have knives with us sometimes when they're traveling through the elevators. And if they get anxious or scared that something may occur. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lydia Delay?
Unmuted. Hello. First of all, thank you to the board of trustees for allowing me to speak today. We're encountering the same issues as our, you know, other departments. Last, no, the first week of school, Friday, we had a student stuck in the elevator for about 20 minutes. And he was, you know, yelling out the elevator, trying to get somebody to, so trying to get somebody's attention. This is at the beginning of the day when students are, you know, all trying to get in, clock in, get into their classes, start lecture. Finally, somebody, he was able to get ahold of someone to come and help him, you know, call, you know, campus police and, you know, for them to call the fire department. Then the following week, just last week, we had two students that were stuck in the elevator. One, well, they were in there for 30 minutes. When they finally got out of the elevator, one was visibly distressed. You know, I waited to talk to her after classes to check on her, and, you know, she admitted that she had a panic attack while she was in there. And, you know, it's just that our students shouldn't have to be going through this. I don't know why we just can't put a sign on it that says that elevators don't work. I've been asking for that. I mean, obviously, we want the elevators fixed, but if they're not going to be fixed, then let's put something on the elevator doors so that the students aren't going in there. We've had guest speakers stuck in the elevators, instructors, I mean, I can go on and on. And the students need to use the elevators because they're carrying, you know, their kits, they're carrying, you know, all their equipment, you know, to work in class. And so we're just urging the board to please help us fix this issue, this ongoing issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Larry Jones.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Larry Jones. I'm an instructor at L A Trade Tech College in the Plumbing Department. My complaint is basically the same as the other complaints that you've heard in regards to people getting stuck on the elevators and the elevator's not working. Slight difference is that you have, we have teachers here who are handicapped. We have students here who are handicapped, and we are being forced to walk up two and three flights of concrete stairs with bad legs, bad knees, hip problems, shoulder problems, and everything else. We also have students that have to carry backpacks, which are toolboxes, rolling toolboxes, which weigh probably a couple of hundred pounds up and down the concrete stairs. Each and every morning, they have to take those toolboxes back down the stairs when classes are over, on breaks or whatever requires them to have to leave the classroom with their stuff so no one else will steal them. We have students here also that are being caught on these elevators or stuck on these elevators when they do try to work. The elevators have been out now for over a couple of years. Myself, I've had operations on my knees, both knees replaced. I have to have surgery on my hips currently. And again, having to walk up and down two and three flights of concrete stairs is not working for me or for any of the other students or faculty members that are here in the CMU building. Trade Tech has four elevators that I could name right off the bat that are out of order, which would be the passenger elevator, the freight elevator, the parking lot elevator for the F building, and the elevator inside of the library. There are other elevators also here that are out of order. If a student has to go up to, on the top of the F building, which is over three floors high, he has to walk up the ramp or do something, find some other way to get up there. I myself have had to call the Sheriff's Department to have them come over to that elevator and pick me up, to take me to my car up on top of that ramp. It's ridiculous that we have to suffer through just trying to come to work and trying to come to school. I urge you, I ask you, I beg you to please help us to get these elevators fixed. I don't know of any other choice that I'm going to personally have to make other than have them move my classroom to a lower floor or not come to work because I can't walk and I can't get up and down the stairs. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next is Robert King.
Good afternoon. I'm Robert King, and I'm the department chair for the library, and I want to thank you for letting me talk today. The library is open for 11 consecutive hours, Monday through Thursday, and for four hours on Friday. And every single hour, we have numerous students who have a need to use the elevator. We're on the second floor. We don't have any ground floor facilities. In addition to DSPS students, the ATM students with their heavy, heavy toolboxes, cosmetology students coming up with their roller boxes of supplies and their heads. We have, we serve the spectrum of all students, and this includes a huge population that doesn't fit in any of those other communities. And those are students with weight issues, have breathing issues, joint issues. We have senior citizens as lifelong students coming in, using canes- And, you know, when they have to climb those stairs, most of them will sit in front of the reference desk for five or ten minutes just to recuperate. And this is the majority of people who need that, that service. Before they go on to do their homework, meet other students in a study room, whatever they're there for. That's ten, fifteen minutes out of their day, just trying to get up to the library. So, you know, it would be really great if we could have some consistent, reliable servicing for the elevators. They're out almost more than they actually work. I know last year, I think, we had the elevators out for months at a time, twice at least. It seemed like it was always out. We have people that have sciatica in our, in our department. It's just, it's terrible. You know, it would be even greater if we could have elevator repairment and it's incorporated into our curriculum with construction, to have something nice on hand, you know? But anyway, it's, it's a, it's a huge problem. And if we could just get something consistent and reliable and quick, we have to wait so long just to get the servicing. So anyway, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All of the trustees went with your, with that comment, so thank you. And next, we have Robert Montalvo.
Hey, good afternoon. I was going to talk about something else, but, you know, I've sat through this meeting. It's my first time here, by the way, and it's really disappointing to see how this board of trustees conducts business. I mean, it's insulting as somebody that, that's here to listen to how business is conducted and watching somebody fall asleep. I have counted eleven times, nodding off. I have, I counted twenty-three conversations. For them, you're giggling. I wonder what you're discussing that is so funny during this, during this meeting. As a person attending this meeting, it's really disheartening. I feel like you're disconnected. And look, you're doing it right now. I can see it. What is so funny? All I'm asking for is your attention for two or three minutes.
And you have it, sir.
It doesn't seem like it because some of you are talking and giggling.
And you should make your statement.
I am making my statement, so please don't interrupt me. That's a violation of the Brown Act that you quote in the beginning, yet you don't follow it. So I, I just don't understand how you get, and it's amazing that so many of these people come up with these problems. Like you have a sexual predator running around these campuses, and you don't address it. Probably because you're giggling like high school kids during a meeting. You're not paying attention to what people are talking or saying to you. You have elevators that are not working, that obviously have been brought to your attention many times. How many ADA violations do you think you have there? What's it going to take? A lawsuit? Somebody falls down? Gentleman mentioned sciatica. Do you guys have any idea what that is, what that entails? That means somebody can't walk. They can't use the left side of their body, their legs. Is it going to take a lawsuit? So you can pay out, what was the budget? I think like seven million that you allocated? You want to increase it to twelve million to cover all those ADA possible lawsuits? I mean, just, and I'm going to circle back to what I started with. It's really condescending, some of you. The young lady in, in the, in the green, I apologize, I don't know your name, but you have been the only one that's actually been focused, and also the gentleman on the right of the panel. But it, it is really disheartening, and I can understand why there are so many problems on these campuses. And it's, it's a lack of attention by some of you sitting up there. You have an obligation to listen to people on these campuses. We spend our time here to bring attention to some of the issues that we see. And you take it as a joke. You can sit there and say you're not taking it as a joke, but your actions speak louder than what you're saying.
Sir, your time's up.
Thank you, Mr. Montalvo. Now on to item DD. The board will recess to closed session.
Actually, can we revisit future announcements? Is that possible?
You need to go back to that?
Yeah, we could just re-go back really quick.
Sure.
Okay. If there's any way, Chancellor, that, you know, we can communicate over to facilities to put, probably in my committee, I, you know, overall, the elevator situation. You know, because I'm seeing that it just seems really odd that there's, you know, Trade Tech in particular has issues with elevators that many. And also, it could be just, you know, who knows about the manufacturer, who knows about the quality of the elevator? I know facilities in particular at this college has said that they might recommend kind of like an overhaul on the actual elevators. Perhaps we might need to rebuild some of them. And this is a good opportunity to use some of the underutilized major LA or unallocated funds to see if we might need to go back to the drawing table and maybe contact manufacturers, contact. Again, this is set from the maintenance that I know is currently going on, orders being part expediting. I know that that's currently happening. Thank you to Peggy and President McQuarters. Could just look at more facilities, you know, master plan angle of elevators. I just want to see it at my committee, just to see other elevators and other campuses because it, you know, again, it just could be something that's a little bit bigger than, I just, you know. And I was actually, I was going to tell you, Kathleen, when you were president there interim, I actually myself got stuck in building, one of the admin buildings. So let's just look at this from a bigger angle, on a, on a larger facilities program angle. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
Can I, one other comment on the other faculty comments from Harvard College? If we can, I know the Academic Senate announced a gathering. I think these are, we have a group of faculty members from Harvard, but it would be great to hear it from essentially the Senate and our EFT partners, whether a fraternization policy, it's been a longstanding conversation. I think it's been brought up in the past. And I remember being in a room with some conversations about it and examples of, of why there shouldn't be a policy. But I think as it's been raised pretty sort of sternly out of one particular group, I think it, it sort of merits having a subsequent follow-up. But I think it would be important to understand, if we do a policy, we're not just doing it for the nursing department at Harvard. We would do it across the board, across the district. And so I think it's important to get that feedback from those faculty representatives.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion?
I just want to make one more comment, maybe with a direction for the chancellor. And you all know this about me, as someone who avoids elevators at all costs. And fortunately, I am able-bodied and I can walk, and I realize that there are many folks that cannot. But I will literally climb as many stairs as it takes, even in a hotel, when the doors are locked. I have security let me in, so I avoid elevators because I'm terrified of getting stuck. And I know that we, even the elevators in this building aren't so great. I really feel like we need to address the elevator issue. I don't know if that's, I know we don't have a facilities director right now in place, but I think that needs to be on that person's job description. And whether or not it's, you know, getting a permanent position or two to service our elevators or having a program where we can actually train, I think that's a great idea. But I mean, this is now an urgent issue. You know, it started with one or two or parking lot elevator, but now it seems to be permeating through the district. And I do remember the former mayor Eric Garcetti was stuck in the elevator at LA City College once as well. So those elevators don't discriminate.
Thank you for that. Could we have a directive where we ask the Personnel Commission to look into an elevator repair position or whatever would be titled?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Okay, yeah. Yeah, and also I would say to the District Academic Senate, that idea of having a repair program.
Oh, yeah.
They would certainly get plenty of-
In-house repair. They can practice on these elevators.
Never be bored.
It is. It is. So see, we need to start thinking about that. Okay.
And I want to say, if our building trades building, the one we're building across the street, the big one, if their elevators don't work, then we have a real problem. So we do need to get that looked at by our Academic Senate and by Mr. Ellerton at LA Trade Tech.
Okay, thank you, colleagues. Any other comment? Madam Board Secretary, did we have anybody that signed up for to make comments?
No, no close session.
Okay, so now, the board will recess to closed session in accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act Government Code, section five four nine five oh, and the Education Code to discuss the matters on the posted closed session agenda pursuant to Government Code, section five four nine five four point five. Is there a motion to go in the closed session?
So moved.
Moved by Eno, seconded by Henderson. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Behams advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bona absent, trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Huffman? Yes. Eno. Trustee Villa. Trustee Vettis.
Easy, yes.
Yes.
Got it.
Yes. Thank you.